Good afternoon, I'd like to call the May 1st, 2012 City Council Meeting to order. Will you please rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please call the roll.
Councilmember Francisco.
Here.
Hachkis.
Here.
House.
Here.
Mario.
Here.
Rouse.
Right.
Mayor Schneider.
Here.
Item number one.
Employee Recognition Service Award Pins.
This is Madam Mayor, members of the council, as you know, every month we present service award pins to employees who are celebrating important milestones with the city, and I'd like to read their names in the record, and we do have one employee here to receive the pin from the mayor. So first with five years, Lorraine Cruz Carpenter, Environmental Services Specialist II in the Finance Department, Michelle Bedard, Planning Technician II in Community Development, Nicole Sansone Hall, who's the Police Property Evidence Technician in the Police Department, Adam Muntz, Senior Wastewater Treatment Plan Operator in Public Works, David Cavalli, who's a Senior Airport Maintenance Worker, with ten years, Roy Forni, Parking Coordinator in Public Works, with fifteen years, Christie Prince, who's Administrative Specialist in the Police Department, Irene Macias, who's our Library Director, and Brian Slagel, Administrative Analyst I at the Waterfront, with twenty years, Michael Karaburu, excuse me, Senior Grounds Maintenance Worker at Airport, and with twenty-five years, Rosie Calvillo, who's the Administrative Specialist in the Police Department, and with thirty years, and he was supposed to receive this last month, but we weren't able to schedule, it's Manuel Romero, who's the Waste Water Collection System Superintendent in Public Works. So Manuel?
So Mr. Romero, come on up. Manuel Romero began his career with the city on September 14th, 1981, as an hourly employee at the Ellis Dara Wastewater Treatment Plant. On April 19th, 1982, Manuel was hired as Maintenance Worker One in the Distribution and Collection System. Since that time, Manuel has had the positions of Maintenance Worker Two, Maintenance Worker Three, Utility Crew Leader, Utility Supervisor, Collection System Supervisor, and his current position as Collection System Superintendent. Manuel leads a very important section of the city's wastewater utility. Under his supervision, the Wastewater Collection Section has adopted important maintenance management strategies and work practices that have resulted in marked improvements in collection system performance. Manuel Routini makes important field decisions that are critical to the collection system's operational success. Manuel has received numerous commendations over the years, his good work has received acclaim from staff in many departments of the city, other professionals in the wastewater field, and members of the public who have written to thank him for his efficient and prompt work. Over the years, Manuel has served as a technical expert, participating in all-important engineering team decisions made to better the city's collection system. Manuel is a seventh-generation Santa Barbara, with ancestors listed in archives of the Santa Barbara Mission. He and his wife Veronica have four sons and two grandsons, all of whom are based locally. So you have nine generations here, that's great. Manuel, I'm very pleased to recognize you for your thirty years of service, as well as your many personal and professional accomplishments. On behalf of the City Council and your fellow citizens, thank you, and congratulations on this outstanding achievement. Thank you very much.
(applause) I just have a few short words here. Thank you, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, and Mr. Armstrong. I'm privileged to hold my position as the city's Wastewater Collection Superintendent, and to have experienced the many opportunities that thirty years as a Water Resources Team Member has presented. It continues to be an interesting journey, and I've been blessed with many opportunities to succeed. The lessons that I've learned along the way have helped create the foundation of where I am today. I look back with unbelievable joy for which I have been informally and informally influenced by many great people, and this would also not be possible for me personally if it wasn't for my wife, whose deep faith and support continues to guide my way. I'd like to acknowledge our Public Works Director for continuing to review and refine our department, and to our Water Resources Management Team for continuing to energize our section with the prospect of new challenges. And finally, for our field staff, hang in there, guys, we can make it happen. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there aren't, Madam Mayor.
Okay, we have a public comment here, I have two minutes here at the podium, we'll start with Kenneth Locke, to be followed by Justin. Just take a moment for them to come out.
My name is Kenneth Locke, I just want to follow up what I was talking about last week, about this community not being intelligent, going to provide you with the means for just understanding that lack of intelligence. Actually, I did a video yesterday called Tennis and Holistic Health, and it turns out that the basis of being intelligent, we can understand in relation to holistic, so holistic intelligence, and then, as I mentioned to you before, I've been raised up as a teacher, kind of a healer, so that, say, the kids or yourselves can have a relationship with an exercise which is completely integrated, integrates your mind and body holistically, with tennis, it needs to be understood in relation to it being ambidextrous. So what I'm claiming to be is actually the first genius of tennis, the most intelligent tennis player who has this knowledge, and then if this community would like to become, say, intelligent and holistically healthy, it would actually have to recognize me and what I was able to accomplish and overcome type of thing, like right now, the basis of competition, I'm sorry to say, it's a not-intelligent relationship that actually limits people's intelligence. So what I was able, I could be understood as a person who was able to bear that lack of intelligence, I had the aptitude for becoming intelligent, and pretty much my job now is to actually pass this information along, that's what I'm doing through my website and on through YouTube and everything. I just thought I'd share that with you today, thank you.
Justin will be followed by Zachary King.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, City Council. Today, I come to you personally in solidarity with workers all over the world, here locally in solidarity with migrant workers, I have a couple of requests of the city to consider. We'd like you to consider a city resolution declaring active support for driver's licenses for undocumented workers. We would like the city to end, to adopt a declaration in support of ending the deportation of non-Level 1 serious offenders in the Santa Barbara County through the faulty program of S-Com. We'd like an end to the gang injunction, and we would like the city to take a stance on corporate personhood and adopt a resolution declaring that corporations are not people and money is not speech and can be regulated in political campaigns. This was, I believe the city taking this stance will help push the movement, Los Angeles City has adopted a similar resolution a while back, Vermont State has voted in favor of this resolution in the Senate already. There's also in Hawaii and New Mexico have passed resolutions against Citizens United versus the FEC ruling by the Supreme Court. I'd like the city to also consider a resolution against Sections 1021 and 1022 of the NDAA 2012, which deal with the detention of persons, deals with the indefinite detention of U.S. citizens at home and abroad without charge and without trial.
You have ten seconds.
Which sets up the frame for a fascist police state. And also, I would like to call for the city to look into doing an official investigation into the fraudulent foreclosures which are happening in the city, thank you.
Thank you. (applause) We want to hear what everyone has to say, I would appreciate if you refrain from clapping for future speakers, so we can move forward in an efficient manner, thank you. If you're here for thirty years, you can clap for that, too. Zachary King, and he wanted a couple of people to wave, is Annie, is it Annie Telfler? Are you here?
Yeah.
Okay, and Gabriel Quinn? Is Gabriel here?
Please take my minutes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure you were here, okay? So you have six minutes. Go ahead.
Hi there, so I've grown up here in Santa Barbara. Happy May Day, first of all, everybody, it's International Workers' Day, and in honor of that, I wanted to speak a little bit about my feeling on undocumented folks here in Santa Barbara. I wanted to speak in support of undocumented people here, it's been a deep shame to me growing up here that people are forced into poverty by their economic system. Who are forced to go through all the risks of crossing the border and making their way here, then have to live in fear, and they're persecuted, and they're deported from Santa Barbara, and I think that they should be defended, I think that it's within the power of our city, you know, with all our police and resources to do that. Now, this is a little out of the ordinary, but in honor of workers around the world, I would like to use my public comment to lead us in a round of solidarity forever. So if anyone would like lyrics, I have them, but I'm just going to begin. (singing) When the union's inspiration through the worker's blood shall run, there can be no power greater anywhere beneath the sun, yet what force on earth is weaker than the feeble strength of one, for the union makes us strong. Solidarity forever, solidarity forever, solidarity forever, the union makes us strong. Is there a rot we hold in common with a greedy parasite, who would crush us into serp to man would crush us with his might? Is there anything left to us but to organize and fight? For the union makes us strong. Solidarity forever, solidarity forever, solidarity forever, the union makes us strong. It is we who plowed the prairies, built the cities where they trade, dug the mines and built the workshops endless miles of railroad laid, now we stand outcast and starving midst the wonders we have made, for the union makes us strong. Solidarity forever, solidarity forever, solidarity forever, the union makes us strong. All the world that's owned by idle drones is ours and ours alone, we have laid the wide foundations, built it skyward stone by stone, it is ours not to slaven but to master and to own, for the union makes us strong. Solidarity forever, solidarity forever, solidarity forever, the union makes us strong. They have taken untold millions, they never toil to earn, but without our brain and muscle not a single wheel can turn, we can break the haughty power, gain our freedom when we learn that the union makes us strong. Solidarity forever, solidarity forever, solidarity forever, the union makes us strong. Just one more verse. In our hands is placed a power greater than their hoarded gold, greater than the might of armies magnified a thousandfold, we can bring to birth a new world from the ashes of the old, for the union makes us strong. Solidarity forever, solidarity forever, solidarity forever, for the union makes us strong.[933.13][933.13](laughter) Thank you for tolerating something a little bit out of the ordinary. Happy May Day.
Happy May Day. That was a lot of words on that small piece of paper, I have to say that. Nico Constantines will be followed by Sharice Cordero.
Well, I guess I would like to start by saying, I hope that you guys join us in fighting this corrupt system. I know it's scary, a lot of us are really scared. These people here, and there's some people outside, are people in your community who really care about what's happening both within this community and around the world. I know a lot of the problems are not your guys' specific responsibility, or it's not your guys' fault, but we're all doing what we can, and I would hope that you guys are doing everything that you can, because it's a very serious thing that's happening, and we've got to be going at it with everything we've got. There are two quotes I will leave you with, that I've been saying a lot this week, kudos to Justin. One is by Beneath the Mussolini, who once said fascism should more appropriately be called corporatism, because it is a merger of state and corporate power, and I'm afraid we're pretty much way down the road to fascism here in this country. And the other one is by Albert Einstein, and he once said that the world will not be destroyed by those who do evil, but by those who watch them without doing anything. And that goes for each and every one of us. Thank you.
Sharice Cordero will be followed by Diego Perez.
Hi, and Happy May Day. Many people don't realize that actually, May Day, the celebration of the first of May, is actually an American thing. A lot of people associate it with communism in eighty countries around the world, this is a Workers' Day where workers are celebrated, but it started in America in 1886 after the Haymarket events, won't go through it, you can go look it up and Google it later, my children's lives have been better because I had a union. I would like to see Santa Barbara be a city that guides the way in reclaiming May Day, in reclaiming May the first in honor of working people, middle-class, poor, we're all working people. And, thumbs up to everything that the other speakers have said, I won't repeat it, but I would love to see you people, wonderful people up there, who have worked in your lifetimes, to explore a resolution to, in Santa Barbara, celebrate the first of May again, and encourage the schools to teach the history of this day, and that we as common people, we as working people, have rights that are being eroded, have a lifestyle that's being eroded, and that we have built the country. Thank you very much.
Diego Perez will be followed by Mary Aspenwall. Diego, thank you.
Gentlemen, lady, Miss Mayor, I'd like to propose a designated graffiti zone. It'll be an excellent area for the citizens of this community to express their beliefs in an image that is not vulgar or...
Mary Aspenwall will be followed by Kate Longstory.
Madam Mayor and City Council, I come to you as a new citizen of the United States. I became a citizen two weeks ago, thank you, and I was wanting to say that there is something very practical that we would ask you to consider. The City Council has a large amount of money in your bank accounts, both in reserve and your operational accounts, and we would very much like to see you move that money to a bank that is not too big to fail. We feel that the idea of a bank that is too big to fail is one that must pass into history. It puts us all in an extremely dangerous position, and we've already seen that although they have wreaked enormous havoc in our economy and caused untold hardship, nobody has yet been brought to justice. This is something practical that you on the City Council can vote to change. We have here in the city of Santa Barbara some wonderful credit unions, and we have many small institutions that would love to have your money, so please do consider that. I'm sure you would have huge support, because as a supporter of Occupy, we canvassed the people of Santa Barbara, at the end of last year, I believe in October, we were met with huge support, and many, many people in Santa Barbara moved millions of dollars during that period. So I'm sure this is one way for you guys to be extremely popular, and I would really ask you to give it your due consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kate Longstory and Ethan's here is going to cede time to Kate, so we have four minutes to be followed by Vee, and Vee, I'm going to ask you when you come up to take your mask off.
Madam Mayor, and members of the Santa Barbara City Council, it is May Day, the Feast of Beltane, and as customary, I offer you sweet cakes. This is the first day of spring, when the world is mudluscious and puddle-wonderful. Today, however, the name on my speaker's card said, Kate Longstory.
My apologies, you're right, and it did.
As I, the person. I am I, the person. When joined by others, I becomes we, the people, and when we, the people, embrace an idea whose time has come, there is nothing more powerful in human form. Today is an international day declaring a revolution, an evolution. We, the people, have had enough. We are rising, like bread, to stop the corporations from enslaving the people, to stop the corporations from poisoning our earth, our food, our water. I'm now speaking as Catherine Anne Smith, and I am invoking my right to a little more time, because...
You have two more minutes.
I suffer from post-traumatic stress disorder, also known as legal abuse syndrome, from what has happened to me at the hands of my government and the school district. I have been illegally thrown off the school board ballot, everybody knows that my home on 3400 Gibraltar Road, just ten minutes from Roosevelt School, everybody knows, it is in the school district of Santa Barbara. But Bill Cerrone and his cronies are so powerful, controlling half of the $1.5 billion of money, taxpayer money that comes into our county, that Ken Pettit and Joe Holland were coerced or convinced that I should be illegally removed. Still, seventeen hundred and five hundred citizens voted for me, and now they know, Kate Smith is a prophet in her own land. My children were the first to be thrown into the school-to-prison pipeline which was created...
You have thirty seconds left.
...in this school district. My home at 729 Mission Canyon Road, I have owned it for twenty-one years, the Dalai Lama's group lived there, there were celebrations, it is well-known, it is beloved and magical. It was sold at an illegal auction. I am demanding that this county investigate illegal foreclosures.
Thank you, your time's up.
I will submit the information that was given to you, to Bill Brown, Joyce Dudley, and Joe Holland, it has a list of...
You can give that to the clerk, your time's up, Ms. Smith. Thank you. So we have Vee, and then the final speaker will be Brian Rosen. Please take off your mask.
Yes, ma'am, may I make a comment about that? I was in Long Beach and was speaking on behalf of the City Council there, and I did not have to take off my mask, so...
Well, I'm asking you to please take off your mask.
I can refuse if you want me to.
Ms. Smith?
I refuse.
I'm asking you to please take off your mask.
Why? May I ask why, then?
Because this is public comment, I want to see who from the public is commenting. So...
Yeah, can we take a vote?
I'll stop public comment, we're beyond fifteen minutes, which is part of our rules that I allow to go over due to my prerogative, and you're welcome to speak with your mask off, or please then sit down.
He has a right to protect himself, and he can speak with a m...
I believe that if I take off my mask, I will be judged by all of you, and then you will judge me, and my work will judge me, and my father and everybody else will, and I believe that I have the right to wear something, because we all wear masks in ourselves. So that is my vote, but if you wish me to sit down, I'll sit down, that is fine, I'll go along with you.
You have a choice, you can take off your mask for one more minute, or you can sit down, thank you. Brian Rosen will be the final speaker.
Could I have his time?
No, you cannot.
Today is the day of the regular people, and all of you are the power elite, and the people with the power who run our society, on a smaller level, of course, than many others, less powerful, we're not in a position of power, we're just asking you to do something. I think that we need to get something on the agenda here, I understand quite a few letters have been sent to you to do a resolution against the National Defense Authorization Act, I believe to you, Mayor, maybe thirty, to Kathy, maybe fifty. Now, I understand when twenty people write, that it will often be at least put on the agenda for discussion on whether the council should do a resolution, or something of the effect. So if you could, are there anybody here who would like to add, who would like to see the National Defense Authorization Act on the agenda? We can... Okay, so if you could put it on the agenda, I think the public would appreciate, will you please do that? It doesn't mean you have to pass a resolution, it's just going to entertain the idea, so that's what I'm asking you to do that.
Thank you very much. Okay, that concludes public comment, we'll move on to the consent calendar, there's some items to read.
Item three, adoption of ordinance for a lease agreement with the Regents of the University of California for the UCSB sailing facility, recommending that council adopt, by reading of title only, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara approving a five-year lease agreement with one five-year option with the Regents of the University of California, at a monthly rent of $1,998.40 for approximately $5,560. of California at a monthly rent of $1,998.40 for approximately 5,563 square feet of water area adjacent to the sea-landing rock groin in the Santa Barbara Harbor effective June 1, 2012. And item eight, adoption of the second recognized obligation payment schedule and redevelopment obligation retirement fund proposed budget for the period of July 1, 2012 to December 31, 2012, including recommendation A that council acting as the successor agency to the City of Santa Barbara Redevelopment Agency adopt, by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara acting as successor agency to the City of Santa Barbara Redevelopment Agency, adopting the second recognized obligation payment schedule for the period of July 1, 2012 to December 31, 2012.
Thank you. Without further objection, we'll wait for the reading. There is a request to pull up the minutes, so item number two, and then item four. So Mr. White, you wanted something on item number two?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, just a minor correction on page four. The minutes state that I was in attendance at two planning commission meetings, and I would ask that that be changed to spoke about the proceedings of the last two planning commission meetings. I did not attend, I reviewed the material in a couple of alternate ways.
You're looking at, just so I'm on, which...
Page four, top of the Council Member Committee Assignment Reports. Says Councilmember White spoke about his attendance, I did not attend.
Oh, I think you're talking about the April 17th minutes, then.
Right, sorry about that. Thank you.
Um, okay. Should we just make a motion as amended for that item? This is on the April 17th minutes? Or do, can we just, Mr. Wiley, can we just do the consent calendar entirety, or should we do it separately with the amended correction? Either way? Okay, so just make that notation for the consent calendar.
I would move approval of the consent calendar as amended.
Hold on just a second, but, well, hold on, because there's item number four also.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So if you can hold that motion. Item four, if you could read item four, please.
Approval of sole-source purchases of traffic signal video detection management system and traffic signal standard equipment list.
Thank you, Mr. Hotchkiss.
Can somebody give me an explanation of what this is? Comes out of the blue here.
Councilmember Hotchkiss, the, um, there's two parts to this, uh, item on the agenda. The first is to purchase a, um, a system. It's a video detection management system. It consists of two parts, there's software as well as communication modules that go in the traffic signal cabinets in the field. It allows us to view the video from the video detection cameras in the field as well as configure them, um, from our office. It allows us to do our job more efficiently, in essence.
How do we configure? What happens? You change the timing of the light or something?
No, um, the, the video detection cameras, uh, what they do is they detect cars, cyclists, motorcycles, uh, at different legs of an intersection, and the cameras, they're not as reliable as the impavement loops that have historically been used, uh, but they're a lot better at detecting bicycles and motorcycles. But the problem with the reliability is they need to be reconfigured because of shadows that can come across, um, different lighting, um, the zones have to be moved from time to time. And what happens when, um, the video detection cameras aren't operating properly is they put in what's called a constant call. So you might be sitting in an intersection and, um, the left turn arrow comes up and nobody's sitting there, and it might just dwell in that left turn arrow for 20 seconds, say. The rest of the drivers might get pretty frustrated at the intersection. So this allows us to, um, realize that that's going on better and as well as react to that quicker.
Well, do we actually have somebody sitting there monitoring this?
No, and that's the problem right now. We, we basically have to be driving by to know about it, or have somebody that can recognize it in the field to let us know about it. With this system, we'll be able to detect problems with that video detection better, we'll be able to see, um, spikes in the occupancy, so we know that that, um, is placing a call all the time.
Okay, oh, sorry, so it's, you can review it. You don't, no, because we don't need personnel sitting there watching TV.
No, 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 and that, that's the idea. We, um, this, this will allow us to do what we do more efficiently.
All right, I guess I understand it, thank you.
Mr. House?
Well, I just, when I read this, I was, um, very much appreciative of the first iteration where we switched away from those things that are in the street to where we have these. As a bicyclist, it really does make a difference to be noticed, and, um, without it, you would tend to maybe even break the law. So it's very nice to, to be seen. And so this is going to make it, um, more effective so that we don't sit there just waiting and waiting and waiting and waiting, whether we're in our cars or on a bicycle.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be able to detect problems faster.
Honestly, I've never seen a bicyclist sit there and wait and wait and wait. As a matter of fact, what's really rare is to see somebody actually stop. I'm just worried one of these days, somebody's going to get in a bad accident, but I'm sure you're aware of that.
Okay. Uh, now we can use a motion for the consent calendar. I think Mr. White already moved, is, is there a second?
Seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, report from the Finance Committee, Mr. Francisco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Finance Committee meant today, and we heard a detailed, uh, description of the results of the dissolution of the, uh, redevelopment district by Mr. Casey. Then we had a discussion of, uh, a general discussion of fee increases in public works, uh, planning, uh, the building and safety, and parks and wrecks.
Great, thank you. Any Councilmember Committee Assignment Reports? Mr. Hotchkiss?
Yes, Madam Mayor, um, actually, there were just four things that I thought we should talk about briefly. One was your excellent performance of Haiku at the, uh, art exhibition, really stole the show. Um, and the Jewish festival had a tremendous, uh, Saturday. The Mormons also cleaned up that day in, uh, Alice Keck Park, uh, and actually, I think countywide, there were some 200,000 members of the church and Latter-day Saints, um, that participated. That was a terrific community effort. And finally, we have, as you know, a new, um, film group in town, uh, based entirely on volunteer efforts, but by both professionals and amateurs called the, uh, Independent Film...
Community Film Studio, Santa Barbara.
Thank you very much. Um, and, uh, they want to do not one, but three full-length feature films, so I certainly wish them good luck.
Thank you. Any other committee assignment reports? Okay, we have some closed sessions to read.
Item 11, Conference with Labor Negotiator, and item 12, Conference with Real Property Negotiators, 1221 Anacapa Street, the Granada Parking Garage.
Okay, and we'll go to recess, we'll be back here at 6:00 PM for item number 13.
I'm going to reconvene the City Council meeting, our evening session of May 1st, 2012. If we could have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Francisco?
Here.
Hotchkiss?
Here.
House?
Here.
Mario?
Here.
Rouse?
White?
Mayor Schneider?
Here. I don't see any public comment, speaker slips? Okay, so I'll close public comment for the evening session, and on to item number 13.
State Route 225 Relinquishment Update.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson or Mr. Iwaziyak?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. We have returned, um, once again to talk about the State Route 225 relinquishment. Um, at our last meeting on January 24th, um, we were given direction at staff level to go back and continue some of the discussion of negotiating points with Caltrans. And just as a brief overview, the section of roadway that we're talking about is the, um, portion on the map highlighted in dark, which runs along Cliff Drive and Las Pecitas Road, and it would be the remainder of State Route 225 in the city of Santa Barbara. This is approximately 4.6 miles of what we would consider a principal arterial type of roadway. In that January 24th, 2012 council meeting, we were directed as staff to go back and discuss, uh, three key elements with Caltrans. One was a discussion about the city attorney's concerns about liability and litigation related to the roadway. The second was issues related to the drainage improvements that had been identified as deficient, and the need to come to a better agreement about how those repairs would be done, or the, um, cost would be, um, considered by Caltrans as a transfer to the city. And third, the issues related to the Las Pecitas Bridge overcrossing and completion of the needed repairs. And I just want to mention at this point, Eileen Lowe from Caltrans is here with us, um, sitting right there in the black and white jacket, and, uh, she would be available as we go forward, uh, this evening to respond to any questions that council members may have. Following the January 24th meeting, we had a, a meeting in February 24th, uh, 2012 that was attended by Mayor Schneider, Assemblyman Das Williams, uh, his staff, and Caltrans District Five Director and members of his staff as well. And Eileen was part of that discussion. And we did come to resolution about the drainage repair estimate, and Caltrans reran their estimate, which had become dated, and, um, we are now in agreement about the, the cost of those repairs. And the new number is 819,000. And as a result of that discussion, Caltrans also determined that they would retain the Las Pecitas Road Railroad Bridge, so the issue of the city's concern with the condition related to that structure is no longer an issue of concern. As a reminder, um, these are costs that we have covered before, but, um, just as a quick overview, there are several, um, responsibilities that the city would take over, uh, if relinquishment from Caltrans to the city were to occur. The one-time city cost would be, uh, associated with traffic signal control or conversions, so that the signals that are along this route under Caltrans jurisdiction would be able to be incorporated into the city's, um, intertwined, uh, traffic signal control system. That's 112,300. There's also an ongoing annual maintenance cost that, um, we are estimating at $367,000 per year. This includes, um, ongoing street infrastructure maintenance, um, the kinds of, uh, crew work that result after, um, there's a deterioration of pothole repair, um, striping repair, uh, the day-to-day kinds of things that happen throughout the year, and then the pavement maintenance associated with our pavement management system. The slurry-seal overlay portion of our capital program would be about 165,000 per year, estimating that we would be doing treatments in probably a five-year, um, cycle. The traffic signal control system maintenance on an ongoing basis would be estimated at $43,000 per year. Excuse me. These are costs that would be incurred by the city with no additional funding to support them, so it would be a redistribution of the existing resource base that the city controls. And finally, the future city improvement projects, um, lots of interest has been expressed in improving or modifying, um, the corridor and providing, uh, amenities to improve, uh, safety for circulation, pedestrian safety, bicycle travel. And once again, um, these are identified in our six-year CIP as possible projects that are all unfunded at this point. The one area that we were not able to come to any, um, different resolution around was the, uh, city attorney, uh, concerns about city tort liability. Um, and I know we have been able to get additional information from Caltrans relative to their, um, history of liability and claims, and also their accident statistics. So, um, the recommendation from the city attorney is that the state agree to defend and indemnify the city with respect to those accidents, or that Caltrans would agree to fund a reserve amount to cover potential tort liability accrued by the city in taking on the responsibility for State Route 225. At this point, we are here to seek direction from council on either moving forward with the relinquishment process, which would still take probably, um, six, roughly 16 to 18 months to complete if this evening, the, the council were to decide this was the direction we were wanting to move in. There are still, um, several steps that are going to take some time to work through, that we've presented tonight, and then go through the steps to work through the California Transportation Committee approval process. And then relinquishment and transfer of funds would occur. So at this point, and you'll notice we have Cliff Drive with no overhead lines.
Updated picture, good. Very nice.
Yes.
I have a question. We're going through our fiscal year 2013 budget now, and in terms of if we were to decide to move forward with the relinquishment, in terms of the funding issues, we'd probably be looking at fiscal year 15?
Potentially, Madam Mayor, it could be fiscal year 14, but I would say 15 is probably more likely.
Probably more likely. If it's 14 to 18 months, we're probably looking at fiscal year 15. So in terms of the budgetary impact, that would be the, probably the soonest we'd see that.
That's correct.
Okay. Questions? And I also want to acknowledge Ms. Lowe from Caltrans who's here. Thank you for coming down. Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Anderson, in terms of the streets funds, which this is going to put some more pressure on, what portion, if any, does Measure A, do Measure A funds play in that budgeting process?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember House, the Measure A funds are predominantly focused on street maintenance and the city's proposed use of those funds. They're not restricted to that. They're just one of the key funding elements for the Streets Fund that we are able to use for general road maintenance work. So Measure A, gas tax funding from the state, UUT funding are the three primary sources of funds.
And the distribution of those funds, obviously subject for SB CAG, but would that distribution for street maintenance be based at all upon volume and linear feet of streets to be maintained?
No, I don't believe so. I believe it's based on population, and there may have been an element originally of street roadway elements, but that's not, it's not the basis for redistribution.
I guess, you know where I'm going with this?
Yes.
By taking on more capacity, is there in fact a chance that SB CAG would consider a greater slice of the pie going our way?
I would say that would be highly unlikely.
Okay, there we go. Thank you.
Nice try. Mr. Hachkis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That road has just been refinished. It's gorgeous now. When are we liable to have to actually do any improvements on it? Because, I mean, it looks like the road you see in Germany right now.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hachkis, the roadwork was done, as you know, last year, so it's recent, and it hopefully will retain the look you described for at least the next couple, three years, but probably within the next five to six years, we would need to do a resurfacing similar to what was done a year ago.
The whole length of it, both on Cliff and on Las Pecitas?
Well, it would depend on funding and what we were able to do with the budget restrictions in the year that that came up for renewal, but hopefully we would be able to continue resurfacing with a slurry seal approach, that we wouldn't have deterioration that would go beyond that.
Right.
But it still would need to be refreshed with that kind of five to six-year cycle.
This may be too early to ask this question, but what we do tonight, would it affect how the intersection of Las Pecitas and Cliff are dealt with, whether it's a traffic signal or roundabout or whatever?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hachkis, no. We have been working, as you know, on a resolution of improvement at that intersection, and the city has taken the lead on that and would continue to be in the lead role in looking at resolution of what a design for that intersection would ultimately look like.
Thank you very much.
Just to follow up on that, though, if it was a city street, we'd have a little more flexibility of what we could do versus what Caltrans may, under their auspices, or no?
Madam Mayor, I'd say we would still have requirements that would need to meet design standards for the use of the funds that we anticipate from the state, but there would be some potential for consideration of design elements that are particular to the city.
Right, because I think the STIP funds, $750,000 is what's allocated, but a few months ago, we were here looking at, there's design options being pursued, and both of them are more than $750,000, so that's, whether or not it was a Caltrans road or a city road, we'd still have to figure out the funding source for that. But given that, if there are non-state monies being used for that intersection, would we as a city street have a little more flexibility of, I mean, of course, it has to fit within design guidelines and code, state code, but if there are other things we wanted to do, would we have more flexibility or not?
I would say we would have some flexibility, but once again, I would expect that we're looking at use of federal funds for that type of project, and so we would want to be able to meet any of those design requirements for use of those funds.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Francisco.
Thank you. Couple of questions for Mr. Wiley. Have you seen the data that the Caltrans has supplied on accidents and claims and whatever it was that they gave us?
Yes, Councilmember Francisco, but only just recently. Actually, yes, yesterday.
Okay. Could you talk to us a little bit about what your concerns are in terms of litigation?
Yes, and I think, you know, it's important to point out upfront and just in an overall sense, it's, I know it's easiest to understand this as a lawyer's liability concern, but it's really fundamentally a public safety concern. And that's, I think, sort of a dilemma for us as a city, because I think if there's any motivation here in Santa Barbara to take over a state highway or the neighborhood to have us do that, it's a concern over public safety, that we would all like to see public safety improved primarily, possibly some other things secondarily. So, and that's my concern as well, but as a lawyer, as the city attorney, I want to have a good understanding of whether this road is unsafe now, in particular, certain intersections, certain aspects of that road, and, you know, obviously with good record-keeping, and there is good record-keeping on this sort of thing, state, local claim record, litigation records, to find out if there is apparent areas of unsafe, unsafety. Part of that has to do with the way that the Government Tort Claims Act works, and the term it defines is a dangerous condition of public property. And, you know, generally, a city or a county or even the state is not liable merely because they own an intersection and an accident occurs. That's just, but can become liable if the history of accidents at an intersection begins to indicate that there's something wrong with the design of that intersection. And that can, and that's what the courts call a dangerous condition of public property. And it really varies, this complicated legal term that the courts have interpreted for many years. So that's what I'm trying to get to the bottom of here with respect to this section of State Route 225, whether we, in, let's say we take over 225, are we going to be the owner of that road? And will it be just a fact of life that if there's a major accident, for example, we cannot prove that an intersection was not dangerous as the law defines that? And that has to do, have there been prior accidents, similar accidents, at that same location? So for example, here, we have evidence since 1998 of 634 collisions. Now, those are auto-on-auto and auto-pedestrian, 634. 320 of those have been injury accidents. 426 persons have been injured. In the last five years alone, and I have to say, I should say, I'm not totally confident that all of these records have been vetted, because, you know, there's always anecdotal information, there's always people who recall certain things, and they're not showing up here, particularly the fatal accidents. But at least these records show six fatal accidents on this section of 225 in the last five years. Well, I'm sorry, I shouldn't say it that way. Six fatalities, I think, five accidents in the last five years. There's been 14 accidents involving 15 pedestrians. I think my point is that it would only take one serious accident to expose the city to tremendous liability, and that we should really have a good understanding of the safety of 225 before we take that over. Because it still may be appropriate for the city to take it over. As I say, maybe we're the entity that can make this road more safe, but at least we, I see my concern as the city attorney, very similar to the concern that Public Works has had, and apparently is getting good answers to, of an unfunded liability. They see a bridge that needs work, they see a hillside that might come down and need work, and they want Caltrans to keep that responsibility. I see a potential liability, a monetary exposure on the city's part, and I'm suggesting that it would be appropriate for Caltrans to either indemnify the city, I know, we know the state is big enough to be good for that indemnification, or to fund a reserve. It would simply, it would be a lot simpler for the state to indemnify us. And finally, I'm not suggesting that this be any form of permanent indemnification. There is clearly a, I think, in long-term, if the city takes title to this highway, say in 20 years, it wouldn't necessarily be appropriate for the state to continue to indemnify the city. But let's say in the short term, in the very short term, we may have an accident that occurred while this was still owned by the state, yet we would get sued. We've actually been sued over this highway even when we don't own it and had claims filed. We easily get those dismissed, but it's not, wouldn't be unheard of for the city to get sued even though we didn't own the highway at the time of the accident. And under those circumstances, I think it's entirely appropriate that Caltrans would indemnify the city and that we wouldn't have to worry about litigation. Then in the midterm, I think, in, I'd say, a five to 10-year period, it's appropriate for Caltrans to continue to indemnify the city so long as we have not altered an intersection from the original Caltrans design. So I hope that answers your question.
It does. It does, to an extent. One other question. So you said you just recently got this data. How long do you think it's going to be before you're satisfied with your analysis as to whether this is a significantly more dangerous street than streets that the city already owns?
Well, I think the answer is just a matter of weeks, but I think, at the same time, we can know that this has been a state highway, and if it continues to function as a state highway, it's probably going to result in more claims and more litigation than the average city street, than say Anaquin or Modoc or streets like that, just by the nature, the physical nature of this, of Cliff Drive, Las Pecitas.
Okay, thank you very much.
And Madam Mayor, Councilmember Francisco and Mr. Wiley, we could amplify on that a bit based on the information that we've been able to pull together on the accident statistics relative to statewide averages, and this is a roadway that has higher than statewide averages. So it's not just comparing it to our local streets. We can provide some more information on that, but the rate is roughly double what the, double what the rate as a nationwide, as a statewide average would be for state's facilities.
Interesting. And one other general question for Public Works, I don't know who the appropriate person to answer this is, but one of the things we talked about at our last discussion of this was what would be required, because I think what a lot of people are concerned about is safety, particularly pedestrian safety. And what would actually be required to create safe pedestrian crossings? What kind of reengineering, what kind of capital improvements, if any? I mean, can we just put up a crossing light? Or do we actually need to narrow the roadway? Or what combination of things would have to be done if we wanted to create safe pedestrian crossings where there are none now?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Francisco, that's not an easy question to answer, unfortunately, because it really is a change in the character of the roadway that I think we're talking about. It's not simply a treatment at an intersection that would be involved. I think the restriping work that was done following the pavement resurfacing last year has had some potential effect, and we'd like to be able to look at the accident statistics and the characterization of how speeds and travel are working with that change. But in order to deal with the volume of vehicles, the mix of traffic, the current speeds that are on that roadway, to allow for some improvement in the pedestrian character and feel of the area, I think would be a more complex type of project than simply an intersection signalization project.
Okay. Can you at least give me some hints about what kinds of changes that would involve?
I think we would be looking at a series of treatments along the intersections that are, would be good targets for treatment, that we'd be looking at site distance issues and what needed to be addressed. We'd probably be looking at things like median construction. And along that route, we would have to work closely with public safety, because, as you know, when we went through the review of the striping plan, public safety was, had no problems with that proposal because it didn't include any kind of physical barrier. So it's, would involve pulling in a lot of different considerations to come up with plans that would be a safety improvement and not just shift safety problems to different types of accident characterizations.
Okay, thank you very much.
Ms. Mario?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Anderson, for your presentation. If I'm reading the letter from the state correctly, they do not want to indemnify us. Is that right?
That is correct. And, Madam Mayor, Councilwoman, it's their standard practice. This is, I think, a challenge for them to even understand how to respond, because in general, they simply have a standard language in any kind of relinquishment agreement. And I think Mr. Wiley has been probing and raising some issues that they haven't really had to address in other instances.
Well, Madam Mayor, I'd add, they basically have declined to talk to me about it, so. And again, I think there's a lot about this that has not been standard in terms of, they have addressed some of the concerns raised by Public Works, and there is some flexibility there. I'm suggesting there should probably be some flexibility on this issue.
Well, let me ask, because it was a state highway, and maybe the area was more rural at one time, and somehow this residential urbanization has grown up around this big, giant arterial roadway, but this can't be the first time that's ever happened in California. But I think, we talked a little bit about this the last time the subject came up, about the changes would have to be extreme and in the millions, right, to narrow the road. And it seems like such an insurmountable thing, and I'm sorry to sit here and recognize that, actually. But I had a more sort of pedestrian question, no, that's a bad pun, about the city relinquishment costs. Ms. Anderson, what ongoing annual maintenance costs, the traffic signal control system maintenance, $43,000 a year. So is that just for that stretch? It's $43,000 a year?
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman, yes, that's the annualized cost for the maintenance of the traffic signals, the utility costs, all of the elements associated with the signals along that corridor.
Can I ask how many signals there are?
Eight.
And do we know what kind of shape they're in?
There are six current signals along the stretch that we're talking about. There, I would expect that their condition is certainly in sync with the Caltrans requirements. We would, as I mentioned, be needing to do some alteration to those signals to bring them into the city's control system.
And then you talk about utilities, so there's other hardscape things that we would take over. How about the street lights? Are those ours or theirs?
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman, yes, those are generally ours, and we would have, when I say utilities, those would be the electric costs, the...
Wiring or whatever?
Well, and the ongoing cost... Well, and the, and the ongoing cost of, of power to support those installations.
Thank you. Mr. House?
There's a number of factors here. And one of them was before, it's last time, and I think the staff report and your presentation addressed it to some degree, that they're intending to keep the railroad bridge on Las Pecitas, which then avoids that whole issue of who would maintain it. We wouldn't have to worry about that. So that's pretty much settled now in the conversation. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Because that was a pretty big sticking point last time. And then, we don't know yet, I mean, the city, fortunately, Caltrans is very amenable to working with the community, but that was because the community was well organized in the restriping plan. And we don't really have a whole lot of data to compare to these years and years of all these accidents that Mr. Wiley's talking about. But at least in that stretch there, these improvements have made a pretty, without, without any of the very expensive kind of, as Ms. Morial's talking about, expensive kind of hardscape structural changes, just simply by the fact of striping, there's been a, a change in the way the whole thing operates. And so how we, what are we doing about measuring that or keeping track of that so that we can have something to compare to the baseline?
Madam Mayor, Councilperson House, Councilwoman House.
I like Councilperson House, that's very nice.
We will be able to track, as I said, the accident statistics going forward from the time that the improvement was made. We certainly have anecdotal information from the residents in the area that the perception is that it's easier to use the roadway in terms of staying, getting on to the roadway from, from cross streets and not feeling that there is a, yeah, I think the issue of going from the two-lane, to the two-lane instead of four lanes with the center turn lane has avoided some of the conflicts for parked cars. It's created the opportunity for a designated area for bicycles, which was one of the considerations that residents had in the area. So the, the allocation of space that occurred with the restriping has helped to define and better, I think, allow the uses of parking and bicycling and travel and being able to make turns into side streets or driveways safer. The, the gaps in traffic are more defined. But when we talk about pedestrian improvements, those are the really challenging ones. And I think anecdotally, people are crossing without any additional crossing treatment, and they're crossing one lane of traffic in each direction rather than two. It's not something that we, we would necessarily say we are encouraging based on the, the restriping as a, as a pedestrian benefit. But people have been able to use it that way. When you get into the next step of designating pedestrian crossings, that's when it really gets to be the challenge.
Sure, sure. And it's going to be challenging. I think maybe one of the very fundamental goals of this whole enterprise is for the city to be able to have the opportunity over the years that come to be looking at possible solutions. Some may be as elegant as just restriping and others with, perhaps, as had been mentioned at some point, median treatment or, you know, the way that the intersections are handled. But I just, it seems like one of the main goals that we have in this whole thing is to be able to make it safer ultimately for anyone who's using it, of our constituents. And that would be our goal. Then, just a real quick question to Mr. Wiley on the, this liability thing. I know that there is, you've answered the question many times when we talk about a particular intersection improvement or something that would affect, anything from sidewalks to the, you know, all these things that we ask you about, that there's, there's kind of a basic built-in design immunity in the sense that, you know, engineers are using the best tools that they have at their, at hand, using standard practices to deal with these things. We're pretty immune in a sense. I mean, people can sue us, you know, as a, as a city organization, but at least having made that best effort, and I would imagine it, us taking over from the state of California, an existing facility, and haven't made any major changes to it ourselves, would put us in a pretty square position, similar to the, those other situations you've advised us about. Is there anything really different here, or would this sort of be the same thing?
It would sort of be the same thing, Councilmember House, but that's actually, I was referring to this when I was talking about the Torque Claims Act, and what is a dangerous condition of public property. And you're right, fundamentally, when it comes to streets and highways, you're, you start with something called the design immunity. And we, we've actually been talking about this quite a bit lately in different contexts. And that's where you do a traffic improvement or street improvements, traffic calming, or traffic control measures.
Right.
And it's designed by a professional engineer in accordance with state and federal highway safety standards. And that's kind of the funding question as well. What's our flexibility? That's the baseline. But then the accident history can invalidate that. Design immunity is just not sacrosanct and permanent.
Right.
If something's designed in accordance with safety standards and it proves to be unsafe, you're not immune. And that's where you need to get into the accident history and to look at a particular intersection or a traffic control, there's another term I can't think of about traffic movements and, and look at that particular aspect of it. And if it's proven itself to be unsafe, design immunity won't do you any good.
I understand. I get that. So one of the things that are, as we just talked about, and I know we need to go to public comment here, but is, there's the, the intention of the city of Santa Barbara to make this safer ultimately for our constituents. And we know that we've asked Caltrans to do, make improvements before that would address these same situations. And now I'm looking at Ms. Anderson here, that we've asked them before to try to make some of these improvements for pedestrian crossing. And they've said, no, we really, we've got it designed to our standard. So our intention in bringing this on is for us to be able to have that ability in our own self-determination over the years to, to, to improve it as the budget allows, as, as we have opportunities for grants or who knows what in the future. Is that-
Madam Mayor, Councilmember House, yes, that's correct. The discussion, as far as I'm, I've been aware, for the last several years, has really been around trying to shift from having the feel of a state highway to more of a feel of a mixed-use residential and commercial. And it's still going to be a roadway that carries through traffic, but the goal of having it feel like more of a city street than a state highway is really the underlying motivation here. And certainly, that would be the city's role, not something that Caltrans would be-
We could never, we could never get there from here with Caltrans, but we could possibly, if we had control. All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Part of the problem of doing the changes that you just mentioned is that this still must remain an evacuation route. Is that correct?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, it is a primary arterial, so it is one of the routes that would be considered emergency vehicle access. There are still opportunities, I believe, to look at designs that would not unduly hinder that, that ability. But it certainly would be one of the elements that we'd have to consider in any design change.
But we could have our cake and eat it too, as it were.
We always try to do that, Councilmember House.
I'm assuming the location of the accidents to which Mr. Wiley referred is primarily the Cliff Drive portion. Do we know that?
Yes. Councilmember Hotchkiss, as, as was mentioned, we've been very recently able to look at some of the trends and, and where the locations are occurring. It's a challenge, unfortunately, to do some reconstruction of accident history, in part because oftentimes there's not a standardization of how the location for accidents are determined. And so it can be, and I think in, in the attorney's office, the attempt to try and map locations is challenged by that very issue. So you've got state, state reports, you've got city public safety reports. And so that, that has caused a little bit of the, of the difficulty in doing some of the tracking and, and analysis. But yes, the Cliff Drive portion, we know we've got intersection locations that are very challenging, the access to City College. So you can probably tick off the areas that would have had some exposure.
Most likely to have been, right?
Correct.
Mr. Wiley, if I could, do we have other examples, or are there precedents where the state has agreed to do what you ask, which I would like to do, but I'm wondering if they're just going to put their fingers in their ears?
You know, Councilmember Hotchkiss, I'm, I'm not aware of any, you know. We, of course, took, took over Cabrillo, and that was a state highway, but that was sort of prior to my time, if you will, and I was not involved in that. So I just, I only know that in theory, there's no reason why Caltrans can't agree to this. It, I understand, they don't want to, but it, it, particularly in terms of a transition period, it makes sense to me. And it makes sense that they would provide us with all of their records in terms of the design plans so that we could, if necessary, attempt to assert design immunity when we need to.
So if we, in one way or another, approved here, being heedful of, mindful of your advice, which I think is certainly cautious and probably correct, would that give you ammunition to go back to them and say, look, we'd like to take this over, but you guys got to work with us better?
I'm hoping that's true.
Okay, I'm going to turn to public comment. I want to ask, I noticed Ms. Lowe from Caltrans does not have her fingers in her ears. She is listening. So, but Ms. Lowe, do you want to, you just put in a speaker slip. Would you like to speak at this time or just here for questions? Or would you like to come on up? Come on. And then Angela Bell will be the first public speaker. Welcome, and thank you for being here.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, thank you for having me. Thank you for considering this. I know you've had a long day already, and I, I hope at the end of this, we'll, we can have some clear direction from you on this point. I do have a handout I'd like to provide to you. I have, I have copies for the public, or I could, is this that, is that a camera that would show on the screen?
Yeah, we can put it overhead. Sure.
All right. I would just like to say, we have been working diligently with your staff, you know, off and on, depending on interest level, for about six years on the relinquishment of this portion of the route. And a lot of our discussion has centered around some of the physical issues, retaining walls, culverts, how drainage works, what the limits are. As you've, a couple of you mentioned the bridge there at Las Pecitas. And we feel that we've worked through those issues and come to a form of resolution that appears to be acceptable to all parties. And as well, in, at the end of last year in October, Governor Brown indeed signed legislation that would enable this relinquishment to move forward. It's not a mandate, it's an enabling legislation. But I want to, I want to touch on a few things. I want to touch first on the maintenance costs, and I'll get back to liability. But the, I have, I also have supporting information about these costs, if you'd like to see the detail. Our total maintenance costs for, for the last almost four years, we're two months shy of a fourth fiscal year, were $329,000. And I apologize, my dollar sign dropped off in my, in the last update here. So where it says maintenance costs, it says 329. That's $329,000 for this segment. And those maintenance costs don't include those for two locations that we're excluding from this. That's the, the ramps at the Castillo intersection, that was already excluded from the original relinquishment. And it doesn't include, or excuse me, it includes costs as well at the bridge. Okay, so those locations are included in our background costs, not subject to the relinquishment. So obviously, costs year to year vary quite a bit, but if you annualize it and don't escalate, it's about $86,000 a year, not including our pavement costs. I've outlined what we have spent in pavement contract work. We completed a complete, a full rehab of the, of the route in 2005. That was a $5.5 million project. The one you're referring to, we completed last year, was a $600,000 preventative maintenance. That preventative maintenance has about a five-year life. The rehabilitation has a 20-year life. So you can expect, as, as your Public Works Director indicated, that you would be coming back in about five years and doing another sort of micro-surfacing. So if we're, if we're considering these types of costs, clearly, the state is more cost-effective overall in maintaining the route. So if this conversation is about total cost to the taxpayer, where are your partner? Where are the partner you want to keep at the table to maintain the route? Because we, we can do it cost-effectively. With regard to the liability, I want to clarify that I have not seen the data that your staff indicated in terms of the number of accidents. The collision data and the evaluation of the route is something that the department would do in the next phase for the project, project scoping summary report that was mentioned. Your staff has looked at your own records, but I don't, I don't have that. What we did provide to you was information about our claims and litigation records. And in a nutshell, in about, roughly 30-year period, we've had 41 claims. Two of them were paid out at combined total about $35,000. The others were minor claims, windshield, you know, breakage, tire, that kind of thing. And we don't keep records for the really small claims. And we didn't have any small claims even in the last 10 years. So the, so the resulting settlement, monetary settlement was relatively limited. But nonetheless, it, it exists. And as public entities, again, as you've noticed, we're all accustomed to having to deal with that. We do our best, as you said, with the design immunity and making sure all of our decisions follow good practice, engineering practice. Unfortunately, this, this issue of liability is not negotiable. We, we don't have any latitude. It's not that we don't want to keep it, it's that we just don't. It would be like selling your car and then, and then having the, having you keep the, carrying the insurance for the, for the buyer. You just wouldn't do that. We will retain responsibility and defend any claim that came forward, that comes forward during our watch. So until the city would take over, then that, from that point forward, then any, any incidents that occurred from that point forward, the city would have to defend. Anything prior to that, we would defend. So even if there was a latent claim and it was, it was an incident that occurred on our watch, of course, we would, we would have to defend that. So I just want to make sure that, that's clear to you. So, under those circumstances, I, you know, considering the recommendation that your staff is bringing forward to sort of condition this movement forward on this negotiating liability, we would not be able to move forward under that circumstance. So I just want to, want to make that real clear. However, again, we are happy to continue to maintain the route. It's not problematic for us. It's not expensive for us. But if this is, if this is a question of money, we'll keep it. If it's a question of local control and having more flexibility in the future, then that's, that's your decision. So I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Yes, Mr. Hotchkiss.
Appreciate your example about selling the car and then having to be responsible for it. But interestingly enough, there is another example of exactly where, that's exactly what you do, which is in homeownership, where you buy a policy, you as the seller buy a policy that covers appliances for whatever the period of time you wish to. So would it not be possible to consider it in that light, an insurance policy, which is going to be very inexpensive relative to what the costs you're talking about, I think? And that would satisfy the city's concern so that we could take this over with no exposure?
Through the mayor, we have no latitude on that. Once the city took ownership of the route, the liability would, would belong to the city.
Well, are you just telling me that's it? We never do this? Or would this be something worth discussing, at least talking about among people at Caltrans?
We, we have no latitude. So there, there's no flexibility that we can offer.
Well, all right. I, I find that hard to believe, but okay.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, first of all, I, I do get the feeling like there's been, there's been an extraordinary amount of give and take and flexibility that's gone on between Caltrans and the city, not only on this, but on virtually every issue that the city and Caltrans has had to negotiate the last decade. It's just been enjoyable to participate and watch, in and watch. So I, I really get the feeling that this is a constructive. It's been a lot of years when it wasn't, it was just your way or the highway, so to speak, or the highway or the highway. And, and the one issue that has kept cropping up for me is the, the maintenance costs. And I appreciate that Caltrans can do this. I can imagine it's an economy of scale or some such thing that allows that to occur. Have, in relinquishments, and I'm imagining relinquishments happen regularly, not, perhaps not all the time, but at least it's a, it's a, it's something that occurs up and down the state. Are there any instances where the state has participated in maintenance funding for some finite period of time after relinquishment, or has provided- Or has provided some kind of concession of funding in that way? In order to soften the blow, obviously, and particularly in these hard times, we're in deficit in a big way in that area. I expect the state is as well. But states is, would be offloading a liability in that area by no longer having to maintain this piece? Would there not be an opportunity to soften that blow to the local jurisdictions by assisting in the maintenance for a finite period of time?
Through the mayor, Councilman White. The department goes through a process to evaluate cost benefit when considering a relinquishment of a route. So in other words, would it, would there be a benefit to the state to not have this as part of the inventory? And so we sort of make a judgment call about what that would be. And then we have a responsibility only to make sure the route is in a state of good repair before we turn it over. And the discussion about the drainages and the dollar amount that was arrived at with regards to those features was in the context of providing a state of good repair. By contrast, the ongoing maintenance is not something that we can endow or set aside funding for, because the only obligation is, are we, are we providing it to you in, in good condition? And so that, this, this amount of 800,000 is what we've arrived at, is we give it to you with that amount to fix and bring that to a state of good repair, and that ends our obligation monetarily.
And so this has not occurred in your experience where any funding has occurred for future maintenance for some period of time?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions for Ms. Low? Mr. House?
Thank you for being here today. I really do appreciate it. And I echo the sentiment that Mr. White has just said to you, that we've got just a great track record, and it's, and I was there during an earlier era when it wasn't so, so thank you. And I just want to be sure I did understand what you said correctly. So in the 30-year history of the records that you have provided to the city, there have been the two largest claims with Caltrans, were two 35, around $35,000 claims, and then there were some number of smaller claims, and possibly as little, maybe even no small claims for the last 10 years. Is that what I heard?
Through the mayor, there were two claims with monetary awards combined were $35,500. One claim was $32,500, the second claim was $3,000.
I see. And then there was smaller, or there are little incidental things over the years that happened? And then you said there were, the last 10 years, there was nothing really to speak of?
There are, there are no claims in the record.
Okay, I mean, it doesn't mean that on any given day, there's some terrible thing could happen, and we know that that's possible, but at least for 30 years, it's been pretty mild. All right, well, thank you very much for providing that information.
Madam Mayor, could I add that that's not what I was told at all? And this is just a few days ago. I was told there were closed files that I could not, that they could provide me no information with, and nothing about 30 years of history, that's for sure.
Wow. Okay, well, we want to find out as much as we can. And yes, ma'am, did you have, you're handing us something here?
The information that I've handed out here, the one that says liability, claims filed, info compiled 2012, this is the same information that was provided to your council on April 25th. I didn't include a hand, a hand scoring sheet was the only thing that was excluded from this, that your attorney also received. It was a 29-year time period, not 30. The closed, the closed claims are on the backside. There were four claims that were closed with no record of monetary awards. And there were numerous small claims, 22 small claims that settled for 5,000 or less, but because they were over 10 years old, we didn't have individual records. And the two claims that were settled, the monetary settlements for 35,500 are listed. And there are two potential claims that we've noted, but that's our own manner of record-keeping. When we see a media story or something, we track it, but the department has not received any official claim or, or, yeah, we haven't received any claim, we just noted it.
Sure, great. Well, thank, I appreciate, I certainly appreciate, I'm sure all of us do, you're providing this information. I know Mr. Wiley's going to want to look at it and compare it to the information that he's gotten already, and we'll go from there. But again, thank you very much for being here and for the cooperative spirit.
Thank you very much, Ms. Low. Okay, we'll move on to public comment. Angela Bell will be followed by Ia Falconi.
I'm Angela Bell, City Council, Mayor. My first, my first comment, I have been working on getting Cliff Drive owned by the city now for 16 years. This is the first time that I have seen positive negotiations. Caltrans was not willing to do anything 15 years ago. They are in an extremely cooperative mode right now. And I would like to address something that you said, Councilwoman Mary, you talked about the impossibility of everything that needs to be done. Just look at Cabrillo Boulevard. That was a state highway. It was not transformed in a year. It was transformed over a period of time. So money is not, when we're talking about money, we're not talking about changing Cliff Drive this year. We're talking about over a period of time. The other thing I would like to point out is the safety of an intersection. The intersection at Carrillo and Meg's Drive and Cliff Drive, I think that's where most of the accidents happened. About two years ago, there was a turn signal, a left-hand turn signal in that intersection. And I would like to know if there is a less incidence of accidents since they made that left turn signal, because that would be a safety factor. So I think they made, that Caltrans made that particular intersection safer because of the rate of accidents. So when we're looking at accidents as a whole, we really can't do that. We have to look at accidents, if this was made safer, if it was unsafe in the beginning, and what was done over a period of time. So we're looking at so many different factors about safety. We can't just lump safety.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Ia Falconi will be followed by John Kelly.
I know you can't cut her off. Madam Mayor, members of council, thank you very much for hearing this issue. Here we are again, 20-year journey continues. I would say that I and the others who are here tonight represent hundreds and hundreds of residents on the Mesa by our sentiments, and I would ask you to consider that, although they're not in the room. The concern of liability and money are appreciated, however, they are a bit of red herrings. Let me remind you, lawyers will find liability under every rock possible, with all due respect to Mr. Wiley, who I respect immensely. However, also remember, everything, absolutely everything, is negotiable. So don't think it's not, and Mr. Hotchkiss is right. Caltrans has the liability now, and they could indemnify under some sort of contributory percentage, old design, new design. And I would submit that this is a new street. So the liability that goes back 30 years is absolutely not relevant at all. We need new data. It's a new street, it's a new signal. And relinquishment is the key to safety. We've lived under this highway in its current condition for many years. We did restripe just recently, and it's made vast difference. Mr. Rouse, who also lives in the neighborhood, will attest to the daily, the daily convenience and safety that this one change did. The money, there's time, as, as Ms. Bell said, it's not happening tomorrow, it's not happening in two years. It's 367,000, which is not anything to sneeze at. However, there's time to save, there's time to allocate, allocate. The staff is very resourceful, you're very resourceful. Economy's coming back. This is something the neighborhood needs, wants. Please be the leaders. Do not postpone. You will kill this project for the next 20 years. Thank you.
John Kelly will be followed by Jeff King.
Madam Mayor, council members, I'm John Kelly, Mesa resident. First, I want to congratulate city staff and Caltrans for having successfully negotiated thus far. I have two comments on the staff report. The first, the report says ongoing pavement maintenance for SR 225 would result in reduced street maintenance in other areas of the city. I say, please keep in mind that this takeover, as I understand it, will only add 2% to 3% to the road area the city maintains, so the impact on the maintenance schedule, I believe, would be very modest. Second, the report says there's an expectation that the city will provide other public improvements soon after relinquishment. These additional improvements are reflected in an estimate of $11.5 million. I say the Mesa neighborhood is realistic about the timing and the cost of possible improvements on SR 225. However, we do expect the city to complete the relinquishment process sooner rather than later. So in conclusion, I believe the most important consideration in this case is the potential to improve public safety on this road. The success of the restriping shows local control of Cliff Drive and Las Bacitas will allow the Mesa neighborhood to work with the city over time to improve safety for, for local residents and visitors. I urge you to move forward with relinquishment now. I am confident negotiations can be successfully completed. I say, if not now, when? Thank you.
Jeff King will be followed by Dennis Thompson.
I'm Jeff King, member of the Mesa Architects. I do want to emphasize that despite the relatively thin turnout, there is still tremendous support on the Mesa for city ownership of Cliff Drive. And, and despite perhaps stating the obvious, the statistics that were cited about the street being twice as accident-prone or dangerous than a typical state highway, I suggest that that's the very reason we need to take possession of the streets so that we can make improvements to make that street safer for the neighborhood. And I agree with everything that was said previously. Thank you.
Thank you. Dennis Thompson will be followed by Wayne Tuston.
Good evening, I'm Dennis Thompson, Mesa resident of 28 years, something like that. I'm going to echo some of the comments other people have made. I think it's great that so much progress has been, has been made, not only in the negotiations, but in kind of the preparation for this, the physical preparations. The street is freshly repaved. That portion that's restriped seems to me anecdotally to be wildly successful. Everybody I know is happy with it. Speeds are reasonable now, they're about 40 miles an hour instead of 55. I don't know anyone who's going to be coming here asking for $11.5 million worth of improvements in the short term. I think you should look at this as a long-term investment, it's master planning. That can never happen if you don't decide tonight to proceed with it. We don't want to lose another generation of possibility here. Please keep some hope alive for us and, and move forward with these negotiations.
Wayne Tuston will be followed by Timothy Harding.
We on the Mesa very much appreciate your attention to our Cliff Drive problem. Please don't postpone getting hold of it. As part of the pedestrian safety, and a little bit toward speeding up pedestrian crossings, we hope you will work toward the scramble, pedestrian scramble at Cliff and Meg's intersection.
Timothy Harding will be followed by Jay Goolsbee.
I'm Timothy Harding, former coordinator of the Mesa Shoreline Park Association, and I'm really optimistic based on the improvements already done on Cliff Drive and the progress on the negotiation. I hope you will move forward immediately on the state relinquishment. And if the representative of the state could cover her ears, I would like to say that it not be conditioned on state paying for the liability. On the other hand, if she didn't cover her ears, then you should continue to negotiate. I think it's very important not to put off, not to postpone to a better economic time, something this important for the neighborhood, because that economic time might never come. We have to find a way to do this now. And the reasons that Mr. Wiley gave for making this conditional on the state paying for liability really tells us the reason why the city has to take over the street. If we postpone because of the liability question, we're postponing while jeopardizing the lives of more people and continuing to make it more difficult for people who need to cross Cliff Drive and Las Bacitas from being able to do so. Those improvements are what we have to focus on, and we have to find solutions once the city takes over the street. And so I would urge you to do only the necessary improvements once the city takes over the street, and then work into the others as soon as possible. Thank you.
Jay Goolsbee will be followed by Nick Sebastian.
Hello, I'm Jay Goolsbee, been a resident of the Mesa since the mid-'60s, and I've studied the history of Santa Barbara pretty extensively, like Walter Tompkins. And I think there has not really big a plan in the city. We've talked, I've heard the word standard mentioned, but the, the highway was built to serve some farms and some oil wells. And since then, there's been a considerable amount of development in the area, including houses built right on the highway. It seems like a strange place to want to build a house or live, but that's, that's happened. Some of the, our big houses, our houses that are set way off the road, but, and there's, there's a variety of different developments. But nevertheless, still, this is the only through-street for a considerable population on the Mesa. And it's developed, when I moved there, there was no houses up on the hills and so forth. In fact, there was cows up there. And there's development, and there's continuous pressure on the city to develop more, although they keep changing the title of it, now it's low-income housing, used to be tenements and so forth. But anyway, there's, there's a lot of pressure for increased population, and so this highway as a thoroughfare needs to continue as such, or you could buy private property and put another through-road in that direction, so there wouldn't be so much traffic or something. That would ease the problem. But I think probably the, the best way to handle it, and I, when I heard somebody representing 100 people, I think hundreds, I think I may represent thousands, but I think most people I've talked to is, they, they're concerned about pedestrian crossings of the road, and they're also the ability, the, we still need, there's a lot of traffic, and there's going to be increasing amount of traffic, so we need to maintain as a highway to go through, since it's the only way, it's the only road to do that. And it's my thought that if the city could build a bridge, pedestrian bridges, footbridges over, they might be able to work it out with the state to do this, to build, leave it with the state, and build the bridges over the highway, and satisfy both problems, in fact, all the problems. And it sounds like there's so much concern about the cost of buying it, that it seems kind of strange to even consider it.
Thank you. Nick Sebastian will be followed by Leslie Witscombe.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council members. It's nice to hear from all of the Mesa residents up here. I'm a business owner from the Mesa for 10 years, excuse me, prior 10 years, and a property owner on Las Bacitas Place. Now, that's the first right turn after Modoc Road, if you're not familiar with it. So I represent that area, and 55 miles an hour needs to be changed for that whole period there. Having traveled Cliff Drive for all of those years, at least twice a day for 10 years, the great improvements that have done already there are remarkable and need to continue on. Now, we need to, in conjunction with that, address the issue from the 101 all the way to Cliff Drive. I think this should go hand in hand with any consideration of Measure Y that's coming up. There are, the stoplights- There are, the stoplights that were mentioned, six, that must be five on the Mesa and one on Las Pocitas Road at Veronica Springs. With Measure Y, there is not going to be any additional stop signs, stoplights, as I understand from the EIR that I read. And so coming down there at 55, it's just unacceptable the whole way. So really, this really will go hand in hand with the whole plan of whether Y is going to pass or not, and you'll be reading more from me in the newspaper regarding these issues than I'm sure others. So I would urge you to consider this, as they said, a long-term, to go hand in hand with future development in the area. With 25 more homes trying to come out of Las Pocitas Place at 55 miles an hour, people don't slow down and consider that your car might stall as you come out of there. There's no left-turn lane if you're going north towards the mountains to come to Las Pocitas Place. I've already gone past my residence and, in a sense of safety for someone that was in the bike lane. So, anyway, I would urge you to relinquish it. Thank you.
Thank you. Leslie Wiscombe will be followed by Hillary Blackerby.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Santa Barbara and its neighborhoods within have been shaped by visions of caring residents who wanted our city to be a better place to live, work, and play. Many in our community have spoken before you with overwhelming support for the visions for Cliff Drive, the need to improve safety, functionality, and aesthetics of the route, as well as the need to connect our Mesa neighborhoods with the main street and not continue to disconnect them with the highway. While I commend staff for their hard work and perseverance in reaching this point in the negotiations, I do disagree with staff reports assessment that there is an expectation that the city will provide improvements to SR 225 soon after relinquishment. I believe instead that residents and business owners who spoke before you at other meetings are sharing their long-term visions for what SR 225 could become. Personally, I'd love to see the improvements implemented in my lifetime, but that's probably not going to happen. But we cannot work to implement the long-term vision without taking the first step, which is relinquishment. Please take the next steps towards relinquishment of SR 225, which allows us to continue our work towards fulfilling our visions to improve the safety, functionality, and aesthetics of SR 225 for the benefit of our entire community. Thank you.
Hillary Blackerby will be followed by Richard Box. And the final speaker will be David Van Hooy. I want to acknowledge and thank your work and Assemblymember Williams on this project as well and the enabling legislation, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and council members. My name is Hillary Blackerby, here on behalf of Assemblymember Das Williams's office. And we were happy to participate. You know, the community came to us, we know this has been going on for, as Ms. Falcone says, 20 years, but we were excited to see momentum towards, moving towards a resolution. I think that, you know, city staff and Caltrans did really work in concert to say, okay, what are our final sticking points? And it seemed like there were three final sticking points: the bridge over the railroad, the cost of the drainage improvements, and then this liability. I have to be honest with you, I was really impressed that Caltrans came back and said, we'll keep the railroad bridge and give you what you want for the drainage. But the fact remains, if you sold your house, and someone slipped and broke their ankle on your front porch, once you didn't own it anymore, it would be silly to think that that person should be able to sue you, even though you don't own it anymore. So, the liability, you have a fabulous city attorney, and it is his job to be as cautious as possible, but it does seem like this road would be safer, and the community would be safer if it were a city facility. So, we would also love to see the numbers of accidents since the restriping, since seemingly that's made it a much safer road. So, we're excited, hope that you move forward cautiously, of course, and I also agree that it seems like the community is willing to wait for changes, and with the way that our budget is, no one expects a new magical street overnight. So, thank you for all of your work and to staff as well. Thanks.
Richard Box.
Madam Mayor, council, my neighbor Randy Rouse. I'm Richard Box. I've been a Mesa resident for many decades. I drive on that road in probably both directions almost every day, so I'm pretty aware of how it's been for a long time. What I've noticed since we've changed the restriping is, I'm on the side where the city college kids live. It's their neighborhood. They walk it, skateboard it, carry their books across that road every day. And now that it's more like a residential neighborhood, the kids are far more careless than they used to be. And they should be allowed to be more relaxed because there is less thundering traffic going through. But the problem is, as a state highway, I understand we're not allowed to put in crosswalks to make it safe. So what I find happening between La Marina and the bottom of the hill is that it's random college kids coming from everywhere. I almost hit a kid on a skateboard just Saturday night because he didn't know where to cross the street. So we can't change that unless this is not a state highway anymore. So, I hear some of these other concerns, and I want to be brief, and I want to just say that I support what the Mesa Architects said, Leslie Wisdom, Hillary Blackerby, and Das Williams' position. I support the things that they've brought to you, rather than reiterate all that. I'd like to point out that the state rep, regardless of what we've heard about these other costs, the state rep says, quote, "This has not been problematic nor expensive." And 35 grand? Hey, we've spent that on coffee in the last 30 years. Come on. This is not a big expense. So, what I'd like to say is that I find everybody that lives where I live feels that we need to take this road back, we need to get our neighborhoods safe. And I would ask you, what's the life of one college kid worth? You want me to contribute my part of 11 mil? Not a problem. This is a big, important safety concern, so we need a new statement. This highway is not my way. Thank you.
David Van Hooy will be the final speaker.
Madam Mayor and council members, it's a pleasure to be here this evening. I'm going to play kind of cleanup here. A lot of, you've heard a lot of good statements from the crowd this evening. It strikes me, after listening to all this, that basically accidents do not equal claims and liability. They're two different set of data. And it seems to me that we have 10,000 residents on the Mesa, we have approximately 10,000 additional students when the city college is in session, along with everybody else who uses Cliff Drive to get from point A to point B. All of those people deserve a safe street. And it seems to me that with a year and a half worth of time of the new striping, that it should be possible to identify what our very capable city attorney described as the state of good repair. Let's identify those, if there are any. I lived on the Mesa for 37 years. There are some squeaky spots, as there are in any community, but let's identify those. Let's figure out whether Caltrans is going to fix it, or whether we're going to fix it when we take ownership of the road. Let's get that fixed, let's make it safe. The liability plummets, and then we can all wait and wait for a better economy, and wait for some crosswalks, and some trees, and all the things that we'd like to see happen sometime in Leslie's lifetime. So, it seems to me that there's a way to a finish line that everybody wins, especially the residents of the Mesa and the city college students. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes the public comment. It's to the council. Mr. Hachakis.
Question first, Madam Mayor. Ms. Anderson, the last speaker, or the next-to-last speaker said would like to see change in crosswalks, et cetera, but the rules governing crosswalks are not different when the city owns it as to when, than when the state owns, is that correct?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hachakis, that's correct. We use the MUTCD, the Manual and Uniform Traffic Control Devices, which is, it's multi-state. And we use it for a reason, because it helps to be predictable when motorists from all over our area and others are using traffic control systems in different communities. They understand how they work and what to expect. And there are, as we've discussed before, the issue of how you determine warrants, and the warrants are a mechanism for being able to make an assessment of effectiveness and safety relative to a particular traffic control device. So, that's a long answer to your question that yes. We would intend to use similar types of evaluation of appropriate strategies relative to pedestrian safety improvements. And having said that, I would also say the interest in trying to move in that direction, I would have to say, would be stronger for the city than it would be for the state.
Can you explain what you mean by that last statement?
I mean that it's unlikely that this would be a priority for Caltrans to take on as a place to be involved in developing strategies for improved pedestrian safety. As a state highway, it functions appropriately for that purpose, and it would not be a priority for them to be looking at ways of altering or trying to address these other issues as it would be for a city. So that's really the distinction. It's not that it's, it would be something that the city would be doing to put in installations that would not be meeting warrants that were appropriate statewide. It's the interest in developing projects that would allow them to be safely incorporated into improvements to this highway.
So, to put it in layman's terms, we have to operate by the same rules we just might take a closer look.
Councilmember Hachakis, I think what I am trying to say is, we would operate by the same types of standards in evaluating devices, but we would have a higher interest in trying to develop strategies that could be incorporated.
Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There's a couple of speakers that mentioned something I was wondering about myself, about safety statistics once the restriping was done. And anecdotally, as someone who does drive that street multiple times a day, it seems like it would be slower and safer than it was before, but once again, it's probably too early to really have those kind of statistics. Is that fair to say, Ms. Anderson?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, it's been fairly short duration to be able to have a real statistical analysis that we would be able to compare to, but we can start to have a tracking of the experience since the restriping was done. And I would say that would be the other analysis that we might be able to do on a historic basis, looking at some of the changes along the line that Caltrans incorporated and what the effect, as Mr. Wiley points out, an agency that's responsible for transportation corridor is looking at safety issues and trying to make improvements and address those concerns. And Caltrans has made changes and installed different traffic control devices over the last couple of decades. And so looking at whether those have been effective and what the change has been in terms of accident rates and that sort of thing would be something that we would be wanting to look at.
Well, this is definitely a route in transition. I mean, we've already seen some changes up there on the Cliff Drive portion of it, but certainly with Las Pocitas and Cliff and the planned roundabout, as well as whether or not they're, you know, depends on the future of Measure Y, whether or not there's a bridge there 55 miles an hour along Las Pocitas. There's a lot of things that are going to be coming up that I feel would be better to have local self-determination than have to go through the channels we normally have to go through to get anything done with the state. I'm glad to see that the Mesa Architects group doesn't seem to expect there's going to be $11.5 million forthcoming if we do, in fact, do this. But I do think that there are enough things in terms of residential safety, pedestrian safety, traffic control, bicycle safety, that it would be nice to have it in our ballpark. And with our secret weapon now, Mr. Bailey on staff, we have a good shot at getting this done correctly. When it comes down, and I've actually wondered about this for years, something like Las Pocitas being 55 miles an hour, being a state highway. And, of course, I noticed, kind of anecdotally, nobody seems to know what it's really 55. They usually go about 45. Is that something that would take warrants to reduce that speed if we so chose?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, we would have to go through a traffic speed analysis, similar to the ones that you've heard from us in our reports on city streets. And, you know, there can be strategies that you incorporate that may result in reducing speeds on a street that would allow you to also make adjustments to the posted speed, but to just go out and change the posted speed because of a jurisdictional transfer would not be practical.
Right. Well, and once again, as we look forward to street maintenance budgets and what we have to budget for this particular stretch of highway, but knowing also that we've probably got a good five years' worth of usable life before we have to put major investments into it, I'm tending to favor the proposal. I would certainly like to get Mr. Wiley in his comfort zone, because he puts us in our comfort zone. So it'd be interesting to see as he's able to gather the information he feels that he needs to advise us properly, so we can make a real decision on this. Thank you.
Can I just follow up just on that point? In terms of final decision-making, obviously, Mr. Wiley, you have some information, you just received it, you need to do your analysis, all of that. If we were to choose tonight to move forward, there's still, as I'm looking at the last slide you had, Ms. Anderson, the city still needs to pass a resolution, and it'll probably take 14 to 18 months, you said, to get to this point.
Yeah, that's correct, Madam Mayor.
So, if for some reason, well, first, let me clarify, Ms. Lowe, if I understood you correctly, in terms of liability to the city, it wouldn't happen until all, everything is signed on the dotted line. Like, tonight doesn't start the time. It would happen after the CTC, the last bullet point there, the California Transportation Committee approves relinquishment and transfer of funds. Once those transfers happen, everything moves over, that's the flip point in terms of liability. Is that, you can just nod unless there's, okay. Just to be clear on this, because I think this is a big point.
That is when it would transfer, Madam Mayor. However, we do need clear direction on your intent, because this idea of negotiating liability or some transitional indemnification is something we cannot do. So if you were conditioning moving forward on that, we wouldn't be able to proceed.
Correct. No, that, and that's something, right, that's the decision-making tonight, but I just mean in terms of the actual transfer of liability, according to what you've been talking about, is when the CTC approves the relinquishment and the transfer of funds actually occur, and everything is signed and done.
And then there's a recorded deed.
Right, okay. So not prior to that moment?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. That's what I wanted to, so, just so I'm clear on process, there's still an opportunity, should we decide to keep moving today, we still have another decision point to make at account, whomever the seven of us are in 14 to 18 months, in making that final resolution. Is that correct?
Madam Mayor, that's correct. And I think just to echo Ms. Lowe's comment, for Caltrans to move forward, they're looking for us to be, in essence, committing to a set of parameters for the remaining steps to move forward. And I believe that that's what Ms. Lowe's comment was relative to. If there is a sense of the council having a limitation on being able to move ahead with the presentation of the points that you've seen, then I think you're not able to move ahead at this point.
That's right. Yeah, I got that. Okay. Mr. House.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's such a great conversation tonight about this, and it is a very important moment. This has been one of those things that's been going around in the community for many, many years, and it's been known, even before, there was an organized effort by the community itself. Everyone has known that there's something, just, it's a kind of a odd mix to have the neighborhoods there adjacent to such a very large structure, which is over-large to meet the true needs of the evacuation route issues and all that. There's plenty of space there to do that and make improvements that could make it safer. I remember, wow, it's been over 30, maybe 33 or 34 years ago, I went up there and bought a couch from a a couch from this little house. I just needed the couch and found it in the newspaper and went on over $35 I spent. And I was just having a conversation with the people, and it came to light that the lady who had owned the couch had just passed away. She had actually been trying to get across to the supermarket, and she crossed in front of a car, and the car going fast in the next lane had taken her out. And it just happened a couple of weeks before, and it just, I mean, I don't know why, but, you know, that couch became very meaningful to me. You know, it's one of those things. And it's like, this precedes the data that we have here today, but it's been a problem for a long, long time. And, you know, I've lived up there a number of times, or three times I've lived in places right in that same area, and I've had to make those decisions, whether to cross the street or rode my bicycle back and forth to work along there. So these are, it's a very, very important part of our community. What's special this time is the convergence of the forces of a neighborhood that has gotten a spirit of self-identification, who stepped up and begun to really take constructive and positive action on behalf of their part of town. And the results are just beautiful. The cooperative effort to get those power lines down, to make those improvements, the restriping, just even the esprit de corps that we experience over there and the talk that we see in the neighborhood of all these cooperative efforts. We want to encourage this. I mean, this is, to me, is like civic engagement at its really best. It's not maybe a gigantic cultural arts center or a $55 million theater or something, but it's as meaningful, it's just as meaningful to the people here to have that sense of self-determination. And I feel like part of our job tonight, I mean, I don't have a whole lot of questions now. I think my questions have been answered. What I think our job is, is to acknowledge that sense of stewardship and then use our offices to facilitate the movement forward in this process. And that what will happen in the future is, in a way, kind of unknown, and in a very positive way, unknown. The East Side made a big to-do about. We needed a better way to get across the freeway over to the other side, Dwight Murphy Field, and to get past the Milpus Carpinteria conundrum, that thing. Now we have the undercrossing at Casique. At the time, as the gentleman suggested, we were just thinking of a bridge across the freeway, a pedestrian bridge. And ultimately, now we have this undercrossing. We could not have predicted that that would be the outcome, and yet it's better than we ever imagined. So I think that we need to kind of keep that positive spirit alive here in the City Council tonight. And the concerns, Mr. Wiley, thank you so much for being just a bulldog, looking out for the interests of the city of Santa Barbara and going as far as we possibly can with that. And I hope that you just keep going after as far as you possibly can. And if there's no way, there's no way, but in the process, we will have done our due diligence. What would didn't go away was the heart of the liability. The liability speaks to the danger, as one of the spokespersons said, and our whole intention is to make it safer. And the only way we're going to make it safer is if we get control of that. And so over the years, we'll be able to make it safer for our constituents. So that's my big old speech. And what I'm going to do right now, just so we can have it as a reference for our conversation, is to just make a motion that we keep the process going towards relinquishment, as suggested as one of the options in the staff report here today. And if anybody wants to help me fill in any of the details on my motion, I'm very open to that.
There a second? You're talking about A, then?
Yeah, relinquishment and pursuing.
Move forward with Caltrans relinquishment process.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Is there a second to that? I'll second that. Okay. Ms. Mario.
Wait, I need to know what he just motioned.
It was option A, move forward with Caltrans relinquishment process. It was just to keep the.
It's at the end of the staff report, Kathy. It's the, there's three options, and it's the option A, move forward with the relinquishment process.
Thank you. I'd like to echo Councilmember House's acknowledgement of the Mesa Village as a positive and constructive neighborhood organization. And I attend the Mesa Village meetings under the intoxicating influence of Alice San Andres. And when I'm in your meetings, I understand the incredible support for relinquishment. When I'm a pedestrian on your streets, I live on the West Side, but I eat and I shop on the Mesa. I'm a very cautious pedestrian up there, making eye contact, making sure the cars see me. So I do acknowledge the support here for relinquishment. But as a city council member, I look at $367,000 a year as a significant, permanent addition to our budget obligation, and that's very sobering. I cannot take on legal liability. That would endanger our public treasury. And last week, we had an update on our pavement management program, and we are not keeping up with maintenance of all the streets. And the longer they go, the harder it gets to bring them back up to good condition. So I'm sorry to disappoint my friends, and they told me this moment would come, being an elected official. So I'm sorry that I can't, I cannot vote for that. So I think I'm more of a postponet tonight. And the budget is not where, yes, it's better, but we're fighting tooth and nail right now to find restoration of some services, paying our employees, looking at the libraries. I know it's not exactly the same funding pots of money, but everything is tight. And I'm cautious and trying to be prudent in this decision, as much as it does not make my friends happy. I'm wondering what can be done to improve safety without relinquishment? Traffic patrols more, maybe? I wonder if the California Highway Patrol goes on those roads because it's a state highway? If anybody can answer that at some time, that might help. We have those speed monitor display things. The Public Works Department has the Slow Down Santa Barbara program, and I found out that we have some signs and some other elements that might help. And programs like the Safe Routes to School will help children do walking groups as they try and cross Cliff Drive safely. So I'm looking at other ways to improve safety short of relinquishment. And I feel like I'm making the right decision tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Francisco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think it's obvious to everyone in this room that the current configuration of Cliff Drive and Los Pecidos is not appropriate to what has developed over the years. Obviously, when these roads were built, it made sense to have, or I assume it made sense, or they wouldn't have designed it that way, to have those as state highways. Now, of course, over the years, residential uses have grown up, particularly around Cliff Drive. And I think all of us agree that what that road needs to be now is not a state highway, but a residential arterial, and that is, I believe, our long-term goal. The question is, in my mind, what does relinquishment achieve? And what is the right moment to do it? Ms. Anderson brings up a very good point about, for instance, crosswalks. One of my big concerns, well, now, actually, one of my former big concerns has been taken care of by the restriping on that portion of Cliff Drive where it has been restriped. I think everyone agrees that that, in and of itself, has made at least that section of Cliff Drive quite a bit safer. But my other main concern, and I think the concern of most of us, is pedestrian safety, crossings on Cliff Drive. And Ms. Anderson brings up the excellent point that it's not because the state owns it that we don't have more crosswalks. It's because of the inherent problems of putting crosswalks in on very wide, heavily trafficked streets. We have to put crosswalks in where it's safe to put crosswalks. And that is something that, in order to achieve that, that is going to take some pretty significant redesign of Cliff Drive itself. At least, that's my understanding. So one of the things that I want to understand is, what is a reasonable and as cost-effective as possible plan for reconfiguring Cliff so that we can make safe pedestrian crossings? I think there are basically three areas of analysis where we don't currently have the information that we need to make a good decision. One of those is, as I just mentioned, at least a sort of a conceptual design of what kinds of changes would be required in order to make it possible to make safe pedestrian crossings. Another thing that I would like to know is, and I realize that it's been a relatively short time since the restriping, but have we seen any change in accidents? That's information I'd like to have. Finally, I would like to have, from Mr. Wiley, his analysis, after he's had more time to look at the material, about what the potential legal issues are. I think that if, as I suspect, we can't really make the significant pedestrian safety changes until we've spent a lot more money on Cliff Drive, money that we will not have in the next couple of years, it doesn't make sense to me to do the relinquishment and start paying the maintenance costs that the state has already taken care of, when there really isn't anything significant that we can do to further improve safety. Now, I agree with Ms. Anderson's other statement that, of course, we as a city, and you and other people as residents of that part of the city, have a much greater interest in creating those opportunities for pedestrian safety than the state has in a state highway. I agree with that. But until we actually have the ability to do those things, I don't quite get the logic of taking on an extra maintenance burden of $367,000 a year out of the Streets Department budget, which we already know is stretched thin. To me, it makes more sense, I would like to have from staff, an understanding of what it's actually going to cost to make the improvements to Cliff Drive that will make those safer pedestrian crossings possible. And again, some analysis of what kind of safety improvement we've already had with the restriping, and a completed analysis by Mr. Wiley after he's had a chance to go over the data that Caltrans has turned over to us recently. I would like to have that information before going ahead with the idea of an annual additional $367,000 cost to the Street Fund. If there's no possibility, if it turns out that we're not going to be able to do anything for, let's say, five years, we're not going to be able to make significant changes for five years, why would we take on that extra maintenance cost in the meantime? I'm sure that Caltrans will be happy to relinquish whenever we come to it. And I want to say, by the way, that I really do appreciate the flexibility and the cooperation that Caltrans has shown. I really do appreciate that there has occurred a change. I'm happy about that. But I assume that if we decided, for financial reasons, as well as safety reasons, that delaying was not going to make a significant change in terms of safety, but it made a significant improvement financially for the city, I'm sure Caltrans would still be willing to relinquish if it turned out to be three years from now, because it's still in Caltrans's interest to do so. So my recommendation would be to get the information we need to make a fully informed decision. And I'm also very cognizant of not wanting to go into the negotiation with a sense that, oh, we can pull out at the last minute if we don't like the terms. I'm stating what now I think are the things that we need to know before we can honestly say, yes, let's do this responsibly for the city as a whole. Thank you.
Mr. White. Public comment is closed at this point.
Mr. Hachkis.
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, no. We're at the council. Could you please sit down?
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, this is one of those issues that is a no-win choice. We have, just on the one hand, a choice of digging into our scarce coffers to spread out our maintenance costs, and on the other side, leaving a highway in a condition that is not acceptable. Clearly, this piece needs to become locally controlled and locally managed. No question of that. And I think that Mr. Francisco has done a good job of laying out the pieces of the puzzle that we need to look at more carefully. We've just had a thorough review of our paving situation, and it's depressing. We're going into deficit every single year. The roads are getting worse. And is that an opportunity to take on yet another cost? It's just something that we're fighting hard for, the citizens, to keep this city going from the parks to the libraries to the streets, doing more with less every year. And I just, I feel a responsibility to move cautiously in this area. So I'd be curious to hear if there are any more comments from my colleagues to a different effect, but I'm still sticking, at this point, on the need to be cautious moving forward. So I would be hoping that we would be going with item, with option B, unless I hear some strong other comments to that effect.
Mr. Hachkis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I think you've heard that everybody up here says it would be great if we could do this right, but this may not be the way it's right. That's going to be disappointing. Insofar as the examples given by proponents of taking this on now, there are numerous instances where we do buy something, and yet we've got coverage, as it were. For instance, when you buy a used car, if you do it right from a dealership, you've got a two-year guarantee on certain parts, et cetera. So there are plenty of practical precedents where this would be improved if we could do it that way. Now, I know the Caltrans people say, no, you can't do it that way. But if we go forward with this, and now we've lost all our negotiating strength, if I can put it that way. So I'll accept your answer right now, but in hope that it's changed. Somebody said, well, they've never seen Caltrans in such a good mood, and I hope that that lasts a little bit longer, and that everything is negotiable. The other thing I would say that occurs to me is that we do have to consider up here as a responsibility, not just one neighborhood, but all neighborhoods. And as Mr. Ozniak and Ms. Anderson have pointed out, to whatever degree it's true, we will be drawing resources from other streets in the city to take on this burden. Already, our streets, I think, if you drive around much, you'll realize they need much improvement. And hopefully, with improving economic conditions, it's not sexy, but it's something we need to address. So I'm appreciation and support of what both Mr. White and Mr. Francisco and Ms. Mario said, that either, I hate to put the hand down the road, but in one way or another, we say, no, we're not going to just rush forward with this, but that we say, we'd like to do it, but there's still some things that have to be satisfied. And the liability issue, to me, is big. Mr. House talked about this couch fatality, if I can put it that way. That's an illustration of the very problem we could take on, and to the detriment of all of us, which I don't think we should do right now. Thank you.
Well, I seconded the original motion, so, and I agree with the original motion, which is to move forward now. I, to say we're rushing into this, I think, is a very odd way of describing what's been going on for 20 years. I mean, this has been a conversation that we've had for a very long time. This is, I think, we agree that the right policy decision is for 225 to be city street or combination of city streets. And it's going to take 14 to 18 months to actually get it to be day one on a city street. There is planning involved in that. Yes, of course, it costs money. But I think we can't, we can't just say, well, it's not our problem now because it's a state highway, even though there's some safety concerns, so we'll just wait a while till we maybe get some money later and then see what we can do and take down, you know. To go down that road, again, we're talking at least, at least five to seven years before anything could even happen on day one, if we don't act today. We're already talking about three to five years, I think, if we do act today. And so the question really is, what is the right policy decision for the city? What is the right responsibility for the city in terms of safety for a major portion of the population of the city and residents and visitors who are in that area? The schools that are. The schools that are there, the churches that are there, the senior facilities that are along that area, the City College that are there, I mean, schools meaning elementary schools as well. And to delay something today, really, I mean, I guess, I would ask my colleagues, if we're looking at postponement, what are we waiting for? Are we waiting for the Streets Fund to hit a magic number where we think we can afford it? Are we waiting for, I mean, what? I don't think the offers from Caltrans, as generous as they are, and this is significant, that between the bridge and the drainage replacement amount of money, I don't think that's going to be on the table forever. And we got basically everything we asked for. And, you know, and I almost asked Mr. Wiley, but I'm not going to, but, you know, it'd be an unfair question. If the city was asked to relinquish a road to a private developer or to another entity, would we take on liability after we relinquished it? The answer is, of course, not. You know, why would, you know, so why would we expect Caltrans to do the same thing? I don't think that's, I think that's a, it's an unfair question to ask. I appreciate Mr. Wiley's concern, and he's doing his job as a city attorney of making sure that the city is out of harm's way as much as possible, but I don't think that if we hang our hat on liability issue that that, I mean, that's just basically saying we just don't want the street. Because I appreciate and I get where Caltrans is coming from, and I just don't see going down that road back and forth. I mean, there's, it doesn't make sense. And Mr. Wiley did also say something I thought that was very important. I wrote it down. Maybe we're the, we are the entity that can make it more safe. And if that's the case, given all the rules that we have under Caltrans and warrants and all the things, we have another big issue dealing with safety next week. Thank goodness we have the flexibility that we do, as hard as those decisions are going to be next week. Now, those are going to be hard decisions on Milpa Street next week, but, you know, and we're not talking about that, but it's the same kind of thing. Here's a situation where there are local streets and we have to follow certain rules and warrants and so forth, but we are responding with every form of flexibility we possibly can under the rules that are on the books. We don't have that flexibility now with 225. And we won't have it for at least five, three to five years, even if we act tonight and moving forward with relinquishment. So to me, the question is, what do we want to do as a city? What is right for the citizens of the Mesa area and those who visit the Mesa area in terms of safety? And if the answer is we want local control and we want to do and perform certain things along a period of time that will enable us to create a safer environment for everyone there, then we need to act tonight. And I know that's hard. I know there's budget issues. I know that, you know, there's a lot of questions and issues about liability that, you know, may or may not happen, but that's really what this is all about at the end of the day. So I'm supportive of the motion that's there. I would appreciate if, to let that motion go for a vote and see where it goes, and if it fails, we can try for something else. But, you know, I hope, Mr. White, I've convinced you somewhat. You were asking for some conversation, but those are my comments for now. Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I really do appreciate the financial concerns of my colleagues, and I have to agree with them, but I also think, agreeing with the mayor about, you know, just good governance and good policy. This road was just done. We don't have to touch it for another, you know, three to five years at least. It's in transition. This road is changing. It is changing within a residential neighborhood. So it's important that we have some kind of determination control. It does represent, you know, a relatively small portion of our overall road inventory when it comes to street maintenance. I would ask maybe the maker of the motion, because there was, staff did ask for direction, not only for them, but for the city attorney's office. And I'm wondering if we could add in maybe to move the facilitation of the negotiations for relinquishment, pending some further analysis by the city attorney or some language to that effect, because Mr. Wiley doesn't, did not have enough time to be able to analyze fully to his comfort what the situation was. But I would like to move this ball down the road because I do believe it is the right policy, the right direction to go. So I'd ask the maker of the motion if something could be changed along those lines for direction for Mr. Wiley.
Before we go there, why don't we just hear from other folks? We'll keep that in mind, but we have some other lights on, so maybe we can incorporate different comments. Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Anderson, you were talking about, I think, one of the sort of good examples of the problem and the potential solutions is City College and that intersection. And you indicated that it would be looked at differently by the city than it would, of course, Caltrans, that the city would be looking at it as, okay, how do we attack this from the standpoint of getting in a crosswalk, whereas Caltrans would be looking at it, obviously, from a transportation, from the vehicular transportation perspective. Would that be something that would end up getting, being a candidate for a grant? Would that be something you'd go, we've got this idea here? Then would you be, would we, would the city be seeking funds to investigate that and go about what we've seen happen in various places throughout the city? Can you speak to that a little bit, please?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, we do, this is not a city street currently. So we have not, as a staff, gotten involved in doing a design development plan for this corridor. The Mesa Architects Group, they're community groups that have been looking and discussing different options, but as a city staff assessment of what kind of design would work and the specifics around what kind of costs would be incorporated into that, sort of in response to Councilmember Francisco's question as well. We don't have answers for you today because we have not taken this on as a design process. We are aware of certain, of the areas that are highest in conflict, and certainly the City College intersection is one of those. It has tremendous number of movements, different types of movements, lots of activity going on, and a large population of pedestrians and people in all kinds of modes. So I can't tell you what the solution would look like, and I wouldn't want to cast Caltrans in a negative light, really, on that intersection either. I think that they've tried to approach it with safety in mind and doing what could be done. My comment earlier was really more along the lines of the entire corridor and looking at it as a stronger candidate for pedestrian-related and other types of treatments that wouldn't necessarily be consistent with a state highway. So the approach and the purpose would be different, and that's really the change.
I appreciate that, as far as the philosophy, and with which I agree. The question, my question was more, are the, is this a candidate for, would intersections like that, and there are, let's say that there's half a dozen of them along the corridor, that where you would then, where the city would then investigate getting help to fund those kinds of projects?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember House, White, yes. Those would hopefully be good candidates for safety improvement projects, which, as we talked about last week, in looking at the pavement maintenance programs, those are not good candidates. When you have an area that has safety issues that are the higher driver for a need for the project, those can be better candidates. So we certainly would be looking for those kinds of opportunities as a way to try and fund improvements along the corridor.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Francisco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. With all due respect, I don't think that, what I'm suggesting at least, is to simply abandon this. And I don't think that tonight is an apocalyptic moment. I don't think that it's true that if we don't decide to do the relinquishment process starting tonight, that it will never happen. What I'm, what I'm asking for, what I'm suggesting is, is the best course forward right now is for us to get the answers to some essential questions. Again, it's obvious to me that everyone in this room agrees that we want to improve pedestrian safety on Cliff Drive. We've made some significant improvements to traffic safety just with the restriping. That, it seems to me, at least intuitively, to have been a great improvement. The pedestrian improvements are going to be a lot tougher. They will involve much, much larger, I believe, capital expenditures. And one of the things that I would like to understand before we say, this is what we're going to do, is how much is that going to cost and when do we reasonably think we'll be able to do it? Because if the reality is, the restriping that we've already done is essentially the only safety improvement that we're going to be able to make in that corridor for the next five years, where is the rationale for acquiring the roadway now? Why not acquire it in five years when we have the ability to do something to further improve safety? Just acquiring the roadway in and of itself will not improve safety. We actually have to make engineering changes to it, and I, for one, would like to understand what those engineering changes would be and how much they'll cost. This does not have to be permanently putting this project off. We might want to do something like, say, table this discussion until we've got more information, and that might be a matter of three months, six months, I don't know. People will have to tell me. But I definitely want to have a better picture from Mr. Wiley after he's had a chance to study all the materials that Caltrans has kindly provided. And I realize that because this is not currently a city roadway, that our engineering staff has not spent a lot of time thinking about what it would take to make it a safer residential artery. But I'm suggesting that I think that would be a worthwhile project, that that would be, I believe, essential for the decision makers sitting up here. I think we need to have some concept. Are we talking about $5 million, $10 million, $30 million? What kinds of changes are we talking about to this roadway in order to make pedestrian safety a reality? And I think we need to know those things before we sign on the dotted line. And so what I would suggest is that instead of saying, yes, we're going to go forward with incomplete information tonight, let's ask for the information we need to make a responsible decision, and if that takes 90 days or six months or whatever, to achieve that, isn't that worthwhile in the total scheme of things, in the total scheme of how many years have already been spent on this project, how much community effort has gone in to making this happen, and how much energy and staff and council has gone forward? Let's make this decision with the information that we really need to do it responsibly. That's what I'm suggesting.
Mr. White.
I'm not suggesting an infinite postponement.
Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would follow that up to ask staff what that would mean in terms of that scoping, as it were. I mean, I'm picturing that to be a significant project, and so what is that? And this is late in the, you know, the budget, the budget's in a, and it's near, nearly fully formed. How would that fit into that?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, we're just convincing about that. What I would recommend, if tonight you are not prepared to move forward and continue with a relinquishment and need additional information along the lines of what type of corridor improvements could be possible and what kind of costs might be associated with them, what I would suggest is that you let us come back to you within two weeks with a proposal of how we would be able to move forward and accomplish that, what timeframe it would take for us to do that type of evaluation, and in all likelihood, what costs might be associated with helping us get there quicker. But I'm guessing it's at least a six to nine-month type of exercise to give you real information. It's too complex a quarter to be able to come back and just give you a swag answer and have it be meaningful, but let us go back and do some staff work to bring it back to you, if that's your wish, within, I would say, a two-week period to at least have a better sense of what it would take to answer your questions.
This is my question. I really, I don't want to lose the momentum on this completely, and I want to reassure you and the audience that that's, and you watching, that this is not my goal. It is, but it is to do it prudently. So I think that's a reasonable piece of the puzzle, and I'd ask my colleagues to consider it.
Question from Ms. Low. There's a conversation going on that maybe something will happen in six to nine months. The offer that's on the table right now from Caltrans in terms of the bridge and the drainage improvements, is there a, is that indefinite? Is there a timeline to that? I would hate to lose that in nine months, for example, and saying that's no longer an option. Is it contingent on budgetary issues with Caltrans? Could you help us out with that, or do you know?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just say, in the, kind of in the general context and the way that you just framed it, there's no expiration date. There's not like a six or nine-month or 12-month expiration date. I would say that with, you know, in all good faith, that would remain on the table for some period of time.
Thank you. Mr. House.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Gosh, when you make a motion, you open it up for discussion, you know, we really got, I got what I asked for. It's great. Just thinking about something, Ms. Anderson, talking about the complexity, but also the opportunity. Just think of this, Washington School, right, Santa Barbara, who's served by this area, Santa Barbara City College, of course, Monroe School, McKinley School, on the other end, LaCumbre Junior High, Tobes Ballet Center, right there, all the kids going to that, Royal Borough State Park, the tennis courts in Ealing's Park, and Shifko. I mean, in this wonderful stretch, all of which serve by, I mean, being used by, utilized by people who would benefit ultimately by these improvements. And I recognize, everybody here is trying to find some way to get there from here and struggling with particular issues that deserve some more, some more analysis. So I want to ask you a process question before I move forward. You had a process chart up there, or rather, a list up there of where things stand before it goes to CTC?
I think that was...
It was the very last slide. There. So this is, what I would like to know is, a lot of these questions get kind of answered inside the process, like, once we kind of kick something off, or like, if, you know, we're going to ask you to do some of this work. Safe routes to schools, for instance, you were talking about grants. We've got all these schools here. I mean, that's like, we have achieved hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars for safer schools improvements in our city, which don't rely on our existing, this is for Ms. Mario, this does not rely on our existing budget. This is money that comes in from the outside. This would become an attractor for funding that we don't have right now, nor would we be providing. It would multiply the value of our existing capital improvement program budget, not the operations, but the capital. So I just want to put that out there for my colleagues who are concerned about the financial implications. Where in this process, it's here, would some of these questions naturally begin to be answered?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember House, I don't believe that this process leads to the information that you're discussing right now. The questions about what type of project improvements would be appropriate and what costs associated with those improvements would we be looking at? And then what flows from that is what type of grants might be available to help support those types of projects. It may be that you have to have a suite of projects in order for something to really be viable. You can't do one thing here and one thing there. There have to be combinations in order for it to be workable. The process that's laid out for the relinquishment doesn't look at that type of analysis. It looks at the existing conditions it puts in place and an understanding of what the current conditions and situations are, and that's the basis for the transaction. It's not a forecast of improvement changes that would potentially be of interest to the city. That's my best way of characterizing it, and I hope that sounds appropriate for Ms. Low.
Okay, and so where would, but then where in, if this were to be followed, like, if my motion were to succeed by some miracle here tonight, and we were to move forward with this, where would that process you just described show up? Where would the bullet point be? Would it be right after, I mean, after CTC and with the interest of the council, or would it be before we even started?
It's a parallel track, excuse me, Madam Mayor, Councilmember House. You're talking about a parallel track alongside the relinquishment process. The relinquishment process presumes that you transfer as-is to another entity. For the city's interest in possible changes, that would be the city's responsibility to analyze and to develop as a potential suite of projects. So it's not incorporated in the relinquishment process per se, but it would be guided and directed by council decision for us to move forward as a city.
And that would happen after relinquishment?
Could happen in parallel.
Oh, in parallel? Okay, so that's sort of, that's quite, that's a good offer then, in a sense, that staff could be looking at this at the same time. Well, I would be interested tonight, and I appreciate Mr. Rouse, I think I would be glad to include that. glad to include that mention. Of course, Mr. Wiley's going to be looking out for this liability stuff anyway, so that can be part of it. I think that within my motion, we can also include just the basic report back on the striping, restriping, any improvements at that intersection at Meigs Road and Cliff Drive. I mean, that's been enough time that we maybe have seen some improvement, or we know where it stands, and we've had a request for more information. And then, and I, boy, I'd sure love it if we could begin to get some broad brushstrokes on what a design, just a big, big brushstrokes on what the design concepts might look like over a long-term, like a really long-term project, and what are the kinds of things, a menu of possibilities, which I think is what Mr. Francisco was asking for, not to hold up this thing, but to maybe help us. So I would be glad to include those three things in my motion, that we ask for staff to report back to us before we make that final decision, which we're going to be making ultimately. So we'd be getting a full report on that as part of the motion. So that's my motion, Madam Mayor, and perhaps others...
Clarify, so it's, if you could clarify the motion.
A, move forward with relinquishment, and it would include the three items here, Mr. Wiley's analysis of the, all the information he has here and gives us a report back, any changes we've seen regarding safety since the restriping and the improvements at Meigs and Cliff Drive, and a broad, and that staff would begin work on the broad-brush conceptual design of possible changes in the area that are consistent with what you've heard today.
Okay. I'm the seconder, I'll agree to that. Ms. Mario?
Thank you. I have a question about staff workload. At the last TCC meeting, there was 20 people who showed up and wanted, they were asking for the same thing that I think you're asking for, concepts for safety, the whole Milpus Corridor, Salina Street, that roundabout below Cleveland School, and Montecito, how it kind of, it goes, it has no sidewalks, and the buses go through there. So I guess I'm feeling like, you know, I want Mr. Bailey to fix, I guess we want you to fix everything, but there are other, it's a competing need, and I just, I haven't had a chance, you know, because it was at TCC, and, you know, I'm trying to figure out how to move it into the pipeline. So it just seems, I just, I just wanted to throw out there that there's another need out there.
And Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Mario, that's why I think it's prudent to come back in a couple of weeks with a fleshed-out description of what the work would be to answer the questions and what a budget would look like to be able to support that work in a timeframe, so you could see those trade-offs and potential issues.
So, Mr. House, are we suggesting your motion is to finalize this in two weeks, given that information?
You know, I think that...
Is that what you're, is that how you're understanding this?
I think what we just heard from Ms. Anderson is an offer to come back in two weeks with some of the answers to the questions that I have just put in the motion. And so perhaps, for the sake of us really moving this forward and getting the information we need to be able to make an informed decision, I'll withdraw my motion and move that we continue this for two weeks, or as long as staff needs to be able to put together some answers to the questions you've heard today.
Well, I was, I was with you until you said, "As long as staff needs to take to..."
Okay, two weeks.
Because I don't want to sit in nine months.
I want to make sure...
But you said two weeks. Are you good in two, to come back in two weeks to answer these questions on May 15?
If you would give us latitude to look at your, your schedule and agenda for the next, I'd say, three weeks, probably a little more reasonable time, we won't have all the answers...
In the month of May, can we say that?
In the month of May.
Okay.
Okay, that's my motion, to continue this, to continue this until the end of May, so that we can hear back from staff.
So come back within the month of May and bring back the answers or analysis questions here, and that will help us hopefully determine whether or not we move forward at that point with relinquishment or postponement or something else. Is that...
Yeah, and perhaps, Ms. Anderson, you can include some possible sources of funding for some, you know, like the grants that we talked about, things like that. Not specifically, but give us some ideas, so that everybody feels comfortable where capital funds can come for those kinds of things as well.
Okay. Mr. Francisco?
Madam Mayor, I just want, I think this is the first motion I've ever heard in five years in city council that's actually poetic, and I am fully in support of it.
Okay, well, it's, April was Poetry Month, but that's okay. I would just, I'm going to support the motion. I'm going to request, though, that if my colleagues still have concerns about what they need to know, that they find out as much as they can between the month of May. But if even we come back here in May and there's still issues, I guess I go back to my original question. If we want to postpone something, what are we waiting for? Are we waiting for certain, and I'm not asking you to answer that question now, but postponement can mean many things, and, you know, so if that's the issue, then I want to be clear about it. But hopefully, we'll get the answers we need within the month of May, and I want to thank all of you for keeping the course. I have a feeling the next time this is on our agenda, this room might be a little more crowded, but...
Do we need to vote on this?
Yes, we do. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Thank you very much, and I believe that is the end of our meeting, and we're adjourned.